This is the Douglas County Planning Commission February 13th, 2024 meeting. And I'll call the meeting into order and if I would ask Paul if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Paul. We'll start with opening public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on public hearing agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the public hearing agenda and identified for possible action, please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. For public comment, if you could please step to the podium, sign the paper, and state your name, and your timing will begin. Opening public comment.
Ellie Waller. On January 4th, I heard Kate's presentation. I want to thank Kate and staff for reminding us about the planning process. It is for presentation only today, so I'm speaking in public comment. I'm hoping in the future we can have a more comprehensive presentation on things like variances for the general public that don't understand what triggers a major variance. Also, the public at large want to understand the entire planning process to provide meaningful comments on things that might be in their neighborhoods. This really isn't just about planning. I've been asking for discretionary budget disclosure for the March meetings. Other topics would be what triggers a master plan update and what is that process? Explanation of applicant statutory rights. When we have things in the comments in the packages, sometimes people don't understand what that means. How is Title 20 being updated? Is it was slated, stated it really needs to be replaced and repealed? Tightening up Title 20 has been a goal established by most of you Planning Commissioners. I'm not a planner. I'm just trying to understand the process of each of these types of things, tentative subdivision maps, text zoning amendments, et cetera. I'm not against development. I just want a process that outlines the rules and how they should be followed. I know it could be more complicated at times. In my opinion, the findings should also cite not just master plan compliance, but community plan, future plan, map, specific plans, development agreements. So I've read many, many pages in the last week since the packages have come out. I've read the specific plans, the development plans related to items you're going to hear later. It's a lot of information to consume. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name is Tim Stevenson. I live out Jacks Valley area here. I came here today extensively to congratulate the planning as well as the county Board of Commissioners on your proactive movements towards the vacation rental ordinances. Some six or eight years ago, I came and spoke to this, an operation that opened up next door to me on Jacks Valley and thankfully, and with the progressive forward-moving ideals, the Planning Commission shut that bed and breakfast down within a residential area unanimously, as did the county. Now, the county was sued later for that, but they prevailed because they had done the right thing. And I really want to congratulate you folks on moving forward into that realm of vacation rental. It's extremely important to community development and the quality of our communities that unbridled residential usage for hotel activities are managed and not just let run willy-willy by one or two, you know, people who are trying to push an agenda. You know, we all know how vacation rentals jack up rents, making homes unavailable for working class, as well as the value of properties, folks coming in, buying two or three big houses, thinking they can rent them by the weekend. Thank you very much for your proaction on the ordinances that we have, and I encourage you to move forward. With the organized regulation that you've had, it's worked. You know, we went from some 460 residences at Tahoe before you began that element and limited it to 600, which is wonderful. You know, there's a long tradition of vacation rental in the Tahoe Basin. You know, South Tahoe had to deal with that because their neighborhoods were dying because it was overrun with vacation rental, making it impossible for workers to live there. Now, our side of the state line is a little bit different. You know, there's some 6,000 homes in Douglas County at the lake. I was part of the census mapping when counting homes. So, you know, and we have, what, 36 or 3800 homes down here in the valley. I was here, I grew up here. I recall when it was seven miles from the bottom of Daggett Creek to the lakeside inn. I recall the first time they oiled that dirt road when I was a kid. I recall when they paved it. I was affronted when they put that gas across my lovely Sierras. And that was then to give, make the valley a bedroom community for the lake. Is that the end of my timer? Do I have 30 seconds? So, thank you very much for supporting, and I hope you can continue to go forward with decent regulation towards this important part of the quality of life in Douglas County. Vacation rentals are positive. It's given a positive cash flow. There's $500,000 in wages that were not here before I came in and, as Mimi, I forget her last name, the community development, said that I'd kicked a hornet's nest. And thank goodness, the county stepped up to the plate. I really want to thank you for that. I want to take much more of your time. But please continue to be progressive on that element of community development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment? Our timing light doesn't appear to be working for the 30-second reminder, so I'll ask the vice chair to just gently remind you when you have 30 seconds and if you could sum up then, thank you.
My name is Patrick Taylor. I live in the Lincoln Park neighborhood. And I want to thank you for hosting this meeting and having this meeting and letting us neighbors that live there full-time know about this was going on. I had been mentioned to me by an appraiser that had come to my house a month or so ago, and I was glad to hear that this was going on because it's desperately needed in our neighborhood to have control over these vacation home rentals that, from what I could tell, are unlicensed. And I really appreciate your effort on this, to take control of this desperate situation that we're in at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I'll close opening public comment and move to approval of the agenda. This is for possible action, approval of proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Is there any questions or discussion on approval agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Bryce moves to approve the agenda. Maureen, seconds. If there's no discussion, then all in favor of approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So it's seven to zero approving the agenda. We'll now move to approval of the minutes. This is also for possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the January 9th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission. I would note that we did have a supplemental packet that was, did include the January minutes, and if anybody needs to examine those, I have an additional copy, and I believe the clerks have an additional copy of the additional supplemental minutes from the last meeting. Is there any corrections to the minutes? Maureen, and then I'll recognize Paul.
I have, I gave my corrections to the clerk, but I'd like to make comment about one correction. It did attribute some of my minutes to you, Chairman. And while I was honored to have my words spoken by you, I don't think you really would care to have these because they were so casual, but you are welcome to say my words anytime you like.
Thank you, Maureen. Paul, did you have additional comments or corrections?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. If you take a look at page 54 of 71, Chairman Walder, you said to me, "Thank you, Paul," and asked for my comments. And below that, it says, "Member Walder speaks." It's Member Bruno speaks. Once again, I think my words were attributed to you, which isn't a bad thing, but it's inaccurate.
Thank you, Paul. Was that in the minutes from the January meeting, or is that in the minutes that were in the original packet from the December meeting?
January meeting on page 54 of 71.
54, 71?
54 of 71.
Oh, the page 54 of the supplemental packet.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We want to make sure the clerks can adequately correct those for the record. Any other comments on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes with the corrections noted.
Second.
Bryce moves approval of the minutes with the corrections, and Maureen, seconds. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Since I was not on the commission, I will abstain from this discussion and vote.
Thank you, Lori. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed to minutes? And for the record, Lori Lyle abstains, so it's six votes in favor and one abstention. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the first agenda item, and I will read this into the record. This is for presentation only, presentation by the Douglas County Community Development on land use, planning, and development applications, and the respective roles of the Douglas County Community Development Staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners. Kate, you can proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Please proceed gently with me. I am still recovering from my trip to Vegas and watching my 49ers lose, so I still haven't recovered quite from that, but I'm going to get through this today. So this will, presentation will look familiar to most of you. Commissioner Lyle, this will look new to you, but I know all the other Commissioners saw it last year. I think it is important, think of it as a refresher course, just to kind of go back through, you know, the planning process. And I will take into consideration also Ms. Waller's public comment regarding a more extensive presentation. I know it's usually time constraints also, because when these are presented, it's the beginning of the year, and I know the BOCC always has a really packed agenda, but it could be something that we get into in the future with maybe an additional presentation mid-year or something to that effect. So I want to begin with a few quotes from the American Planning Association that summarize our role and how important it is in our communities. So the goal of planning is to maximize the health and economic well-being of residents in ways that reflect the unique needs, desire, and culture of those who live and work within the community. Cities and counties need to consider what can and should happen to a community and how it should grow and change, and when it should offer residents 10, 15, or even 20 years into the future. And planning establishes goals and policies for directing and managing the future growth and development of a community or region. Move on. There we go. So the most important thing I believe in planning is proper planning and how it helps us improve our community and its members, and how do we accomplish this? So let's take a look at these key components to proper planning. First, we need to develop a common vision. This will increase buy-in and effectiveness of plans and save money by avoiding duplication, sizing facilities properly, and promoting efficient and cost-effective investments. Next, we want to create a sense of place and reinforce a sense of community by incorporating architectural, environmental, and aesthetic elements as part of the planning to connect people to their community. We also want to create and enhance property values. How do we do this? Well, by enhancing property values with a community that plans for parks, and trails, and playgrounds, transit, and other amenities. We also, in relation to planning for parks and trails, this directly relates to how planning safeguards public health and safety. Planning provides opportunities with access to physical activity and healthy foods. Public safety is protected with strong building codes and other regulations to prevent fire or flooding, as well as designing buildings, parking lots, streets, and neighborhoods to reduce operations for crime, opportunities for crime, I'm sorry. Next, we want to provide public facilities and infrastructure by preparing communities to meet future demands for public services and facilities such as water and sewer systems, roads and transit lines, fire and police stations, schools, parks, and libraries. We also want to improve economic development. Well-planned communities offer residents and businesses a range of convenient and affordable choices. We also protect the environment and conserve resources by identifying important natural and cultural resources, conserve these resources, and protect the environment. Lastly, proper planning needs to set clear expectations for all, those involved in the process, landowners, boards, Commissioners, county staff reviewing application in order to help to minimize any conflict. The master plan is a very important part of any land use in Nevada. The Douglas County Master Plan was updated in 2020, and the next update will be in 2025. So what is the master plan? NRS requires a master plan to be created when a planning commission has been established. Secondly, official public comment first prepared and adopted by the Planning Commission was then adopted, is then adopted by the governing body. Secondly, or thirdly, master plan is a long-term general plan for physical development of the county, and typically looking 10 to 20 years into the future. The master plan identifies current issues and needs in the community. The master plan, again, is a general plan that summarizes goals, but does not indicate detailed regulations. We see more specific or detailed regulations in our county development code, which we refer to as Title 20. Lastly, the master plan includes actions to achieve goals. This is seen in the implementation part of our master plan. What are the actions, and how do we get there and accomplish each goal? Now that we see what the plan is and why it is important, let's look at how we implement the plan. First and foremost, it starts with the Douglas County Development Code, Title 20, and zoning land uses, and zoning land for uses. First, zoning is what separates a community in order to regulate land uses. And the goal is to make sure uses are compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. In Douglas County, we utilize Title 20 to regulate development and determine whether to approve or deny any project. Some of the provisions from the development code we look at when determining the validity of a project are zoning and land division, to floodplain regulations, growth management, as well as processes for applications for planning, engineering, and for building permits. Did it move? Yes. Let's take a look at who does what in the planning process, beginning with the Community Development Department staff. The staff is responsible for day-to-day implementation of the master plan and Title 20 of Douglas County Development Code. Staff reviews development applications per master plan and code. Staff is responsible for providing a high level of customer support. We track issued building and zoning permits, review plans, and respond to development questions on a daily basis. Staff prepares public notice for hearings. Staff provides technical advice to Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners during public hearings. And lastly, staff administratively hear minor development applications as allowed by code, examples, design review, minor variance, and parcel maps. This slide is a important one regarding our advisory bodies in Douglas County, which are the Town of Genoa, the Town of Minden, and the Town of Gardinerville. Per Douglas County Code 20.08, all zoning permits and tentative parcel maps and subdivision maps within town boundaries must be reviewed by the town prior to final action. Exceptions for signed reviews are like temporary permits or surveys. No final action shall be taken until a formal written recommendation has been received by the director or hearing body. Failure of an advisory body to make a recommendation may not operate to deprive an applicant of statutory rights. There are timelines set by NRS for some of these items to be heard by various boards and commissions. Thirdly, actions by an advisory body are evidence to be considered by the final decision-maker. Lastly, and is Douglas County will work to implement town design standards to the greatest We also see that the Planning Commission, which is all of you, are a very important part of the planning process. A planning commission is required by NRS, as Douglas County does have a population of more than 45,000 people. The Planning Commission has seven members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Members serve a four-year term, and the Planning Commission meets the second Tuesday of each month. The Planning Commission reviews various applications, such as amendments to the master plan, zoning map and zoning text amendments, as well as subdivision maps and plan developments. The Planning Commission are a recommending body, just as the towns are, so members are not the final decision-maker with the exceptions of approvals for special use permit or major variance requests. The final decision-maker in the planning process is the Board of County Commissioners. The Commissioners' role is also vital in the planning process as Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners evaluate recommendations from the Planning Commission, staff, analysis, and public input. The Commissioners' final decision-maker on master plan amendment, zoning map, text amendments, and subdivision maps. The Board of County Commissioner hears appeals of special use permits and variances from the Planning Commission. So I have a brief flow chart of how the process works, starting with a typical application and how it proceeds through the process. So the first is pre-apps. We really encourage this to applicants, to address any issues or get kinks out to avoid applicant paying for filing fees or design work that might not be necessary based on what they may learn at a planning pre-application meeting. The application is reviewed for completeness the first three days, then distributed to the various departments for review. Typically, two weeks later, we have an internal projects meeting for staff to discuss projects and take notes. Next, we would send out to applicant to notify them if either corrections are required prior to moving forward, and/or conditions of approval with the application. In addition, we are also implementing a staff applicant meeting this year within our process. There was a public comment at an earlier Board of County Commissioner meeting that these meetings were meant to say yes to applicants, and that is not at all the intent. Many major projects that staff encounters are projects that have been approved years earlier, Virginia Ranch being a great example, that was approved in 2004, 20 years ago. But we recently met with the team at Virginia Ranch and had a very productive meeting and discussed some of the conditions and made suggestions to ensure that the best project is presented to the community and for the community. If staff runs into a project and there is a major issue, and the applicant disagrees and wants to move forward to a scheduled meeting, staff would recommend denial if appropriate, and staff can support that decision via Title 20. Once the review is complete, staff prepares staff report for each of the applicable advisory bodies and the Board of County Commissioners. The staff report will either have conditions of approval or findings, and justification for denial. The report is laid out for you, starting with the summary of the project, including some background on the site, images, and descriptions of the zoning, the surrounding zoning, and those types of things. You will see a description of the project, as well as an evaluation of the project ending with findings and fact. If the project is within the Town of Minden, Gardinerville, or Genoa, then the project would be heard at their town board meeting, and they would make a recommendation to staff. Staff then includes recommendation to staff report to the Planning Commission, who in turn makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. You as the, or I'm sorry, the Board of County Commissioner does make the final decision to affirm or deny the Planning Commission recommendations. So these are some of the, I've mentioned these previously, so I'll kind of skim through those. These are the typical applications that are heard. Master plan amendment applications are accepted annually in June and December. They are approved by the Planning Commission, then adopted by resolution by the Board of County Commissioners. Zoning map amendments and zoning text amendments are heard by the Planning Commission and Board in any given month. The Board adopts these amendments by ordinance after two readings. Plan development is another zoning layer, and the use of intensity must be compatible with the base zoning and the master plan. The zoning standards can differ from existing, but does require a minimum of 25% open space. We also have tentative subdivision maps. Those are land division, creating five or more parcels, and that is heard by the Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners. We also have special use permits, generally compatible with the zoning, but gives Planning Commission an opportunity for an additional layer of review. Again, these are heard by the Planning Commission unless appealed, then they would be also heard by the Board of County Commissioners. So ultimately, as I said, the staff report is going to end on the findings of fact, or the evaluation of those findings by staff to determine if we feel the applicant has met the findings, or they failed to meet the findings. met the findings, or they failed to meet the findings of fact. This is the most important sentence in this presentation. In order, this is vital when determining the validity of a request. If as a member of governing body, you want to deny a project, it must come from a finding or findings that you feel an applicant did not meet. And that finding, or again, findings, are voiced when you are requesting denial. The findings are found in the NRS, and then some are particular to Douglas County. Findings of fact bring transparency, order, and predictability to a proceeding. They allow the applicant and public to understand the factors the commission considered, provide a rational structure to guide meetings. The burden is on the applicant to prove that the standards have been met. Staff will provide unbiased analysis of the findings in the staff report. Comments made by applicant, public, staff, or commissioners should always relate to the findings of fact, must be followed in order to reduce the chance of litigation. You can see that the findings of fact are very important, and you want to pay close attention to those when you are reviewing staff reports. That is the end of my presentation, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask. And thank you again for your attention to the presentation, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Kate. Excellent job, and I want to also congratulate the rest of the staff of the Planning Department to do an outstanding job on the individual projects. Questions for Kate from the members of the Planning Commission? Maureen?
Quick question. Could you please briefly go over the difference between the master plan, area plans, specific plan, and Ellie brought up during public comment, community plans, and where they fall in that lineup?
Sure. So, as I mentioned earlier, what the master plan is, right? So, the master plan is a general plan for physical development of the county, okay? So we're typically looking out 15 to 20 years in the future. That's what the master plan looks like. And within the master plan, we have the community plans that are also part of that, and it's the same kind of story for each community. This is kind of what we see our, this is what we see in our community, and this is what we're looking for in our community plan. And that's why those are all part of the master plan. So you have the Town of Gardinerville Community Plan, the Town of Minden Community Plan, and so on and so forth. We also have area plans, not to confuse everybody a little bit more, but in the Tahoe Basin. You know, we're currently working on the South Shore Area Plan update. So there's different areas in the Tahoe Basin that have kind of their own plans, their own regulations that have been developed over the years. And then finally, we have the specific plan. Specific plans are specific to a project. I mentioned Virginia Ranch. We're going to be hearing an item Buckeye Farm. Those all have, are affiliated with a specific plan, so those are required. I believe it's if you're doing more than 160 units, you, a specific plan is required. It's called a specific plan, but I wish it was called a general plan or a conceptual plan, because it really is supposed to be kind of a high-level land use document. But over the years, some of our specific plans have gotten too specific, and it can kind of cause some hurdles to try to get over when you're dealing with a specific plan with a project, especially one that was done years ago. And some codes have changed, and there's been updates. So I think moving forward to, I think the specific plan is something we're going to look at in our code update and how we might better define what that means, so that we keep that of clearly a more conceptual plan and still following code and what's required. So that's the difference. Hopefully, I answered that okay for you. Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions from members of the Planning Commission? If not, I will close this agenda item. And again, thank you, Kate, and thank you, members of the Community Development Department and the planning staff. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, and I will read this into the record. This is for Possible Action Discussion on Development Application DP 24-0016, a zoning map amendment requesting to change the zoning designation of 89.39 acres from A19, Agricultural 19-acre minimum lot size, to SFR 8,000, Single Family Residential 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size, MFR, Multi-Family Residential, and PF, Public Facilities, each with a PD Plan Development overlay. The subject parcels are located north of Buckeye Road, east of Minden Elementary School in the A19 zoning district in the Town of Minden Community Plan. The property owner is Park Ranch Holdings LLC, represented by Keith Rubin, R.O. And Kate, you'll be presenting this, and if Keith is not here, I guess Rob Anderson will be presenting for the applicant. So Keith, go ahead and proceed with your presentation, and then we'll move to the applicant, and then we'll entertain questions.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Just for clarification, because I know, I don't want anyone to be confused. So, in January, you did hear the PD and the tentative subdivision map. The zoning map application, we did need them to submit. So this is strictly just the zoning map application. You're not rehearing the PD and the tentative subdivision map. So this application just wasn't part of the January, but we do, you do need to hear it per code, so that is why, so the applicant did submit it, and that's what we're doing today. So I know there was a lot of documentation, typically with any application, whatever is required for the application, the traffic analysis, that's why it is included. But this is just for the zoning map application. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. And we do have Rob Anderson here today, and I will share the screen for his quick little presentation on the...
Chairman, may I ask a question of Kate?
Sure.
Certainly, Paul, go ahead.
As I recall, in the earlier application, which was the PD and the overlay, there was a bit of a compressed time to look at conditions that staff had suggested be applicable to that overlay and plan development, the PD. Did you reach an agreement? I apologize for being out of the...
No, that's okay. Yes, we did, and those conditions will, are part of the Board of County Commissioners. Once the outcome of this meeting, that outcome will be included, and all three applications basically will move forward to the BOCC and presented together. But yes, conditions have been agreed upon.
Thank you, Paul. Kate, if you don't have anything else to present, we'll move to Rob Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rob Anderson, a poor substitute for Mr. Rubin, but I'll do my very best. Kate, will you be manipulating the...
Yeah.
Okay. You ready? So thank you for the opportunity to present this zoning map amendment request to you. First slide, please. And next, there you go. So the request is to amend the zoning map amendment as a PD overlay on the 89.39 acres. This is the same site that you saw at your last Planning Commission meeting, and you recommended 6-0 to go on to work through the conditions of approval with the staff, which, as Kate points out, we have successfully completed that, and those, that matter will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners. In addition, we also, since your last meeting, we also successfully completed the review with the Town of Minden, and they voted 4-0 to support the project with their sets of conditions, which were also negotiated and agreeable to the applicant. And before I go any further, Mr. David Park is with me today, too, and so if there are questions, I can answer. Perhaps Mr. Park could better answer your questions, just for clarity. There are three, in this particular application, there are 304 Single Family Parcel Zone SFR 8,000 that occupies about 79 acres of the site. There are two parcels, as a result of the discussions with the Minden Town Board, that are now zoned multifamily PD or would be subject to approval of this board, as well as the County Commission. The maximum density on those two parcels is anticipated to be 20 units. There are 14 parcels as a result of the plan that are zoned public facilities, so it'd be PFPD specifically that occupy about 9.2 acres of the site, that include the Center Park, the greenways, there are some connecting trails, and a village buffer and trail. This is the planned, or the development plan for it. This has changed a little bit since you saw it, but nonetheless, it is where, essentially the results of the discussions with the Town of Minden. The Central Park is obvious, I think apparent by the diagram that's in front of you, that being the Central Park, very similar to the Central Park that exists here in Town of Minden with streets around all four sides. There is a, essentially, a median or a traveled way landscaped with trails that goes through the center of the project, reaching essentially from the west side over to the two multifamily sites that are located on the east boundary of the site, away from Montero Development. Buckeye Road in this particular example, just for orientation, is to the south. Montero subdivision would be to the west or to plan left on this. Continue. And essentially, that concludes our presentation. We concur with the staff's findings. We have made similar findings in our presentation, and as we made it to the, to staff, and we would, at this time, respectfully request your approval of the PD applicant, or excuse me, the zoning map amendment application to go with the PD. I'm happy to address any questions you might have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Rob. If members of the Planning Commission have questions of staff or of Rob, just please raise your hand or turn your microphone on, and I will recognize you. Paul, go ahead.
I apologize. It's not a comment with respect to the application. It's probably something I should have mentioned, but it's very tenuous, but I mention it now as a disclosure. My father and Mr. Park's grandfather were golfing buddies back in the early 60s. So I was 10 years old. I remember sitting in a golf cart, and that's about my association.
Thank you, Paul. Questions from the Planning Commission for the applicant or for staff? David?
Yeah, I have to say I'm having kind of a deja vu moment here, because it was in 2020 December that this room was full, totally full on that day. 200 people spoke against this project, and it was approved 3 to 2, but there's only two or three people that spoke for it. I think this is a showing of how planning is extremely important, and how what the public wants isn't always what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Maureen?
I don't know if this is relevant or if it makes a difference. What happened to the trees around the outside of the project?
You turn back the couple of slides. I believe those trees are still there, they're just not highlighted in this plan. So there is still the perimeter trail that goes around the project, and I do believe there are, I may be mistaken on this, did those get removed?
No. So Keith, did I ask the same question this morning to Keith when we were talking on the phone, and I said, you took those out? I bet someone's going to ask something about that, and should have known it would be Maureen. Those are still there. He did that, so it would be easier identifiable to where the public facility parcels are, and so that's the only reason that this is not, the trees are still there. It is part of the BOCC, but he just, he did that just for a visual, but the trees do still go all the way around.
Okay, that's a very beautiful part of the project. It's really a nice entryway and visual. So I just wanted to make sure they're still there.
I think the emphasis, Ms. Casey, is these, this is the change really that occurred from the previous presentation, is that Center Parkway, if you will, that goes through from west to east to the multifamily and the Central Park. He was, I think we were trying to highlight that change for everybody's benefit from the previous submittal.
Trees are good.
Trees are always good.
Additional questions for members of the Planning Commission? Mark, and then we'll go to Lori.
Thank you. So, Kate, my question is, once Mr. Park builds the flood channel, submits the CLOMAR, and assuming that FEMA does not approve it, what options does he have? Can he come back and just rearrange where he's putting his houses?
AJ, I'll defer to you as far as the answer to that question.
I might be able to help with it as well. Can you put back up the application? Are the, excuse me, the development plan? And yes, third slide, if you would, please. So Mr. Nedrep, the conditional letter of map provision has been prepared and filed by Douglas County on four, that would ultimately remove significant portions of this property, if not all of it, from development. Certainly, the developable portions, those that would be less than 19 acres, are shown on the county's conditional letter of map provision to be removed from the primary flood zone. There are some internal improvements that help facilitate the local drainage. In the event that FEMA someday would, or excuse me, hopefully someday soon, does not approve that conditional letter of map provision, then that, in theory, there would be an alternate plan developed that would allow the project to be developed in this configuration. But we don't anticipate that to be, or excuse me, we do not anticipate that to occur, but if it were to, I guess we would be back, at least in part, to remedy that situation. The code is clear, parcels less than 19 acres in the primary flood zone are not allowed. And so, to realize the full development potential, it would have to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Lori?
Yes, thank you. I have a question about the, based, looking at the land plan that you have provided, tentative map, there's an area to the west and to the north that I assume is going to remain A19, and it's showing with some detention basins or flood control facilities within it. Is that going to remain A19? It will be changed in the future to some other designation?
Those are actually designated, I believe, PF. Those were the open space parcel. Go back one slide on, if you could. God, that guy that was just on the screen is looking old. Needs a haircut. Well, slide just prior to that, I think has that information for Ms. Lyles' comment or question. So those 14, those 14 parcels are the public facility zone parcels, PFPD, under this zoning map amendment.
So it is inclusive of these areas, because it's not clear on the documents that I have exactly what we're changing, where we're changing it. But I imagine that's described in the specific plan, or the...
No, it's described in the zoning map amendment application. So this... No, it's described in the zoning map amendment application. So this slide, which is the third slide in, no, one before that. And your hand out there. Or the slide that's on the board. So the, do you want to answer?
In the packet also for the item, the different documents that were, it shows the tentative map and it describes and it shows the shaded portions and the acreage for each of the different, the public facilities, the multifamily and the single family.
Mr. Chair, may I? May I?
AJ, yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. AJ Haines from the DA's office. I'm not sure if we're talking about Ms. Lyle, the areas outside of the PD, those would be unaffected. The only areas within or that are being rezoned would be those within the PD boundary. So the areas outside the PD would remain A19.
So the PD boundary is that red delineation line?
Yes.
Okay. So the areas that I was talking about are the ones that are west and north of that. And so they will remain, they're not affected by this. Will they change at some time in the future?
No.
Do they need to change?
I'm, I'm sorry. AJ, I appreciate your remark and the clarification that you provided. And it's absolutely correct. So those, those are unchanged. They remain A19. Those that are outside the PD boundary. I was thinking you were speaking inside the PD.
Should they change to public facility at some point if they're detention drainage facilities?
No, no, those are allowed in that zoning district.
Additional questions from members of the planning commission? If not, I'll move to public comment on this agenda item and then we'll bring it back to the planning commission for further questions or deliberations.
Good afternoon, Ellie Waller. I don't know about you, but it was confusing reading the January 9th packet, tried to figure out the changes here. I'm confused about the conditions of approval and agreement that have been met that you haven't reviewed. But your recommendations from the January 9th meeting are going forward without the benefit of understanding what was, I guess you can go to the BOCC. That one was unusual. I believe you have the cart before the horse when it comes to Douglas County definition of this agrihood farm-based development. Who vetted the definition? When was it approved? The definition is necessary to understand land uses proposed with examples of a village center gateway farm. All of this does affect zoning maps. January 9th, February 13th, and the upcoming February 15th, staff reports, don't even mention agrihood, just Buckeye Farms. Where can one find criteria to ensure applicability of zoning? The public, the commissioners, the staff should have a definition. Should Title 20 have to be updated so we understand what an agrihood is? In the master plan implementation section, implement the agrihood strategy framework accepted by the board in September of 2020. Why hasn't this been done to complement these approvals being requested? I've got tons of questions. I'll have a bigger presentation for the board in their packet. The specific plan says Buckeye Farm is a model for a presentation for a farm focused on TDRs. Buckeye Farm specific plan, the remaining portion of the 16 acres will be focused on an agrihood. Again, we don't even know what an agrihood is. So how can we benchmark and have any approvals? The phasing plan now has all recorded in December 2040. Was this a negotiated staff change from the January 24th presentation? Don't tentative maps expire in four years? This applicant is asking you to allow 16 years in the phasing plan? Where can I find the Buckeye Farm design manual? I will contact community development. And how can a resolution before the Board of Commissioners on February 15th, before the planning commission has taken an action be in play? Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Additional public comment? Could you state your name?
David Larson. And looking at that map, I don't see any provision for managing the water leaving that property faster after it's developed than before. So where is all this water going? And who downstream will it affect? And in that neighborhood, being a relatively flat environment?
Thank you. Additional public comment?
So am I correct in assuming that this?
Excuse me, could you state your name again?
My name is Tim Stevenson. I live in the north part of the county. This is independent of the 3,000 units that the county approved in that same general area. Is that correct? This is not part of the, of the, the development that moved from Topaz Ranch, an area that needs development, needs development funds, that we moved it here into town for maximum profit. This is separate from the 3,000 homes. Is that correct? Pardon? 2,500. Well, so, so it is, then it is separate from that. How can a developer of that magnitude not contribute to the community by putting in a viable parkway that gets the traffic off of, of the tie-up of, of downtown Minden and Gardinerville? I, I think it's reprehensible that the county has required everyone on the, on the southeast end over there to put in a four lane, but this developer not, as well as the development going on with the county is going to be forced into paying for a two-lane road, which is insufficient. A two-lane road with driveways coming off on it. County planning is important to make our downtown viable for the citizens. And the Mueller Lane Parkway is extremely important. And planning has somehow just taken it off the books for this one specific corporation. You know, Parks, you know, got a sweetheart deal to pick up for the county, the whole Dangburg Ranch decades ago. Parks have been an integral part of the community here in, in a lot of ways and the development up at the lake, you know, we granted them all sorts of development agreements up there and, and trying to work around a, a road not on their property. This developer should have a responsibility to our community, should feel a responsibility to put ground into this parkway. And I know this is late, that it has been discussed for a number of years, but this is another movement of going forward. We need the Mueller Crossways to make Minden and Gardner more accessible, more manageable to we, the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I'll bring it back to the planning commission. Kate, you may have taken some notes. I've taken some notes on some issues that I think we can address and then we'll go forward with the deliberations by the planning commission. First of all, a number of people have talked about the process and I think we can all agree this was not the, the perfect process. We do have a, the zoning map amendment before us now and the plan development and the tentative subdivision map or what we considered in January and what the board will consider on February 15th and then second reading on March 7th. And I guess there was a little bit of confusion perhaps on whether they should be all joined together, whether the zoning map amendment was even necessary based on the provisions in the, in the development agreement. But we are where we are here today and I think that's, that's something that we can just work through. There were a number of issues also that were addressed in public comment that I think are outside of what we are considering today, the zoning map amendment. And I do appreciate those being raised. That issue, those issues would probably correctly lie before the Board of County Commissioners at their meeting in the future. So I don't think we need to, to elaborate on those. I, I did want to also address the whole question of agrihoods. This was something that was in the, in the proposal that was approved originally in 2020, but as we know, things change over time. And then we do have a forward-looking process and some of these will probably come to fruition in the future, but don't need again to be resolved now. The question of, of water is an important one and Mark raised some, some very good points earlier. I would point out in the, the letter that R O Anderson submitted, it's in the packet on page 90. It does say that the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee shall review all subsequent development proposals. So I think we have that covered. They have great expertise and we rely on their judgment. So those were some of the issues that I did want to, to raise in response to public comment. And Kate, I think you probably have either corrections or elaborations to, to my comments.
Yes.
Come back to the, the board for deliberation.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Just to address a couple of comments, and again, I know this was a confusing one. So the motion at the January meeting, and I think Mr. Haines at that time clarified what the motion meant. So the motion from the planning commission was approval if staff and the applicant could come to terms with conditions. If we did not come to terms with conditions, then in essence, you would be recommending denial to the Board of County Commissioners. So that is why the conditions do not come back to you nor the PD or the TSM. So that's, that is just clarification on one comment. The other comment regarding the, the phasing plan, I know this is just a zoning map amendment, but again, it was confusing. There, besides a specific plan, there was a development agreement. And in that development agreement, it was agreed to for the December 31st, 2040. So that is why that was updated. I was following code, but the development agreement trumps that if, if there is a development agreement. So that is why that was updated is based on what was in the, agreed upon in the development agreement. So just to clarify those two comments.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Kate. We'll bring it back to the board. AJ, comments or questions that you need to address?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. AJ Haines from the Douglas County DA's office. I just also wanted to address the, the mention of the 2,500 homes that were approved for this specific plan area. This is part of that same area. So these, these homes are among that number. And as Kate mentioned, the specific plan is connected to a development agreement that was also entered into between the county and Park Ranch. And pursuant to the terms of the development agreement, Park Ranch is contributing to Mueller Parkway. So this is part of the pre-approved number and the developer is contributing to Mueller Parkway.
Excellent points. Thank you, AJ. Rob, did you have anything else that you wanted to respond to that came up in public comment or that we've addressed recently?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to supplement AJ's remarks there, the, the applicant for Mr. Stevenson's benefit, the applicant actually dedicated the right of way, the full 200-plus feet of the right of way in consideration of the development agreement. So the right of way there of Mueller Parkway, that is. So there was a, a lengthy discussion relative to the development agreement and that offer of dedication, but ultimately is most, if not all of you that sit on the planning commission recognizes that it was in fact Mr. David Park that did grant across his property, the right of way necessary to construct Mueller Parkway from Toller Lane to basically Hayborn Road north of the Montero Development. Just for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rob. We'll bring it back to the planning commission now for any thoughts, comments, deliberations. I would again remind everyone that the, the findings that are in the packet are on page 72. There are four of them, A, B, C, and D. And Kate has done a good job on the staff response and also indicating that the applicant believes that the development agreement should be deemed sufficient to support the findings for this zoning map amendment. So that's what you should base your decision on. And I'll yield to any members of the planning commission that want to make comments at this point. David?
Yeah, I still have an issue with financial impact, the way it's presented. Every time we have a development, it talks about the income from that development, never discuss the, the expenses. If we look at our budget and the number of people in the county, it's about $2,400 a year per person that, that costs the county to have people move here. And that's an expense that should be somehow acknowledged in the financial impact. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Other comments or observations for the members of the planning commission? Maureen?
If I could find a reason to vote no on this, I would. And it's not because of the project, because I like the project, but the process in getting here was unpleasant for our staff. And I felt at the last minute, at the last meeting, that the planning commission was treated with disrespect. We have an educated planning commission and the representative for the applicant was very curt. And he was, his speech was threatening. And he was disrespectful to the citizens who are observing the hearing and that we who are the appointed body by the Board of County Commissioners to hear these applications deserve better as do the citizens of Douglas County. I felt that staff through this process deserved better, that they worked very, very hard to be accommodating to the applicant and that they were under tremendous pressure. They worked very, very hard and extremely long hours and that it was all totally unnecessary. And I'm trying to be very judicious in my words and I'm trying to be a lady. But there, 7.1 in the development agreement, I got it out and read it over again, is very clear that the county does have a responsibility to approve zoning map amendments. And for this reason and this reason alone, I will be voting to support this item before us.
Thank you, Maureen. Paul?
I don't disagree with my distinguished commissioners' commentary with respect to conduct, but I guess I must have a much thicker skin. And it's probably because I've been in a circumstance of negotiations that have been extremely difficult to end litigation before in my past. So I, that rolls off. What is significant to me is that at our last meeting, what was put forward were a number of conditions that I thought benefited the project substantially. And the fact that the agreement, not agreement, and I apologize, but our recommendation was, and I remember that Commissioner Klutz didn't like the word, but, but had a condition precedent. And that condition precedent, otherwise it would be denied, deemed denied, was that all of the conditions be agreed. And indeed, the conditions were in a negotiation agreed. So I can see no reason why we should not pass this current zoning map. So I can see no reason why we should not pass this current zoning map amendment consistent with all of the work that was done to date, particularly in January, where I thought that the project benefited substantially. I'm mindful, and we recognize that it's potentially, in a phased project, it may not be the park development group that comes back with later iterations, because you can sell off pieces of the development. But that's why I think we're trying to be so careful in January. And as far as I'm concerned, I think staff did an exceptional job. I think that the applicant did the right thing, and I'm in support of the zoning map amendment for those reasons.
Thank you, Paul. Other comments, or if we're prepared to go to a motion, the recommended motion is on page 69. David, did you have other comments before we go to a motion?
Yeah, I want to agree with Paul. This has been, and Maureen, this has been a very painful project for me, too. And seeing how many people did not want to see this project go through in the very beginning, and some of the conditions of that project, it was commented at the time that it was the most disadvantaged project agreement that many people had ever seen. And it did pass, but now we're here where we're at, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, David. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't belabor the point. I just want to say that, as I mentioned in January, I think compromise is when both parties walk away, not feeling like they got everything they want. And so I commend the applicant and staff for working through this and getting to a point where we could get the conditions right so that both parties could move forward. And for that reason, I'll be voting for it. And if there's no further comments, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to for approval of development application DP 24-0016, a zoning map amendment, because all required findings have been met, subject to the conditions imposed on the associated PD overlay intentative subdivision map applications DP 23-0235.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mark seconds the motion that makes recommending approval. Any further discussion?
I would
Lori?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I would ask the Deputy District Attorney about the development agreement obligation to make appropriate findings. Could you just maybe address that briefly, the obligation the county has and the appropriateness of that particular section of the development agreement?
Yeah, A.J. Haynes from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Essentially, the development agreement and specific plan contemplate that so long as applications come forward consistent with those documents, then essentially the findings for the ZMA, for example, are deemed met. So there's, you could almost think of it as like a preapproval or a preconsideration of those conditions. You'll see in the staff report, though, staff did go through with regard to each of those findings and address them individually. So there is the presumption, you could call it, that this is because it's consistent with those documents, it's deemed approved or should be deemed approved, but also, as staff have indicated in the report, those findings can be met individually on their own, based upon the merits of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. If there are no other points to be made or discussion, then I'll ask for the yays and nays on the motion by Bryce to approve the agenda item. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is seven votes aye and no votes nay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's take a 10-minute recess now before we consider the next agenda item. So we'll come back at approximately 25 after 2:00. I'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission back into order, and we now have Agenda Item 3. I will read this into the record. This is for possible action discussion regarding Ordinance 2024-1635, an ordinance amending Chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code by limiting and restricting vacation home rentals in the Lincoln Park residential community. Before I ask Ernie for his presentation, I would ask if anybody has any disclosures to make. Paul?
I am a VHR permit holder, and I live just north of Edgewood and the UNR property in Tahoe Beach Club.
Thank you very much, Paul. If there are no additional disclosures, then Ernie, I will turn it over to you for your presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ernie Strailo for the record. Paul, I can pull your permit. We can fix that problem. Thank you for having, listening to some more fun with VHRs. I'm sorry that I have to keep coming here with this stuff. Today, I have a short presentation on Lincoln Park, just on the noticing requirements. I do tend to overnotice on the VHR side. So we have had a sign posted at the entrance to Lincoln Park for about three weeks, and I've had a code enforcement person driving by to make sure it still stands and that you can still read it. So it's been up there. We also sent out, I think it was 140 letters, to everybody in Lincoln Park that lived there, as well as 600 feet beyond the boundaries of Lincoln Park, just to make sure. Most people got those. I realize that some folks, it may go to a P.O. box and may be unlucky. So if you give me a moment here, let me make sure I can figure this out. Okay. Just a housekeeping item here. On the left side is the packet pages. I went in last night, and I went into the packet, and I pulled the packet pages of each of the items that are in the packet that we provided. So the first, of course, is the agenda itself. This is the presentation that I'll be going over. I did add a couple of things in here, including the item on the right. I don't think that's in your packet, as well as the page number information. I also added parking information in the backup, and we can talk about that in a little bit. The staff report, which is just a reminder that the staff report is prepared by me and my staff, and is not influenced by any outside parties. And if there's any questions about what's in the staff report, we'd be happy to answer it, as well as the DA's office can talk about the meaning of the staff report. And then the ordinance red line is in the backup, the 378 to 382. So that includes the, all the changes that are being proposed. On the right is the noticing parameters, as well as I have an enlarged map over here by the podium. It doesn't have the circle and all that stuff on it, but it kind of gives you a bigger representation of the neighborhood that we're going to be talking about. So how did we get here? This wasn't my idea. This was something that came from Commissioner Hales. Commissioner Hales had made a visit to, was visiting in different areas of Tahoe, and there's been a lot of concern in the past brought up by the VHR board members, as well as, and was shared with Commissioner Hales. And so Commissioner Hales had, went on the, on the record on the November 2 meeting to talk about that she wanted us to take action right away on Lincoln Park. And of course, there are some other quotes in there that'll talk to, you know, with a conversation in there. And this is, this is out of the minutes from those particular meetings. There was a vote, also that the BOCC voted four to one to specifically address the areas of Lincoln Park, specifically to look at the clustering, those are my words, clustering density. There's five, there's a total of seven VHRs in the Lincoln Park neighborhood. There's five on the south end that are pretty much next to each other, or in front of each other, behind each other, as well as two others on the north side that are much more spaced. And so they, the Board of County Commissioners voted to have the VHR Advisory Board take a look at that and see if there is a way to decluster, is their words. And then the second item was to look at, instead of what we traditionally do is we wait for attrition to happen, which can be decades, lifetimes for some of us, depending on the neighborhood, there was more of a forced attrition to make it happen quickly, right? And so we'll go through And so we'll go through that a little bit in here. And so on the bottom, in the last paragraph, they noted that it was a request continued. You know, they wanted us to continue to work at refining restrictions according to specific situations and various locations around the Tahoe Township. So this is, right now, we're focused on the Lincoln Park area, but this could be used as a model for other areas of the Tahoe area in Douglas County that, that the Board of County Commissioners wanted us to, the V H R Board to take a look at. So that's where this started. This is some comments that was presented at the V H R Advisory Board meeting on November twenty ninth of last year, brought by the chairman, chairperson, Mickey Hempler, that some of the notes that she wanted to take a look at as they discussed the different parameters they wanted to take a look at. So I'm not going to read all through this, but you know, basically, if you've been in that neighborhood, it's a tight neighborhood. It's, there's one entrance in and out. It's, it's not for the faint of heart if you're not from there. I kind of know which areas to drive quickly, or as people have told me, a farmer's turn, where you coast and you turn. It's, so some of the, some of the neighborhoods are quite hard to get into, as well as that particular neighborhood, because it abuts the former ancient Lincoln Highway, which is actually the frontage road in that neighborhood and has been taken over by Highway fifty, which would, in later years, would be raised that kind of cut off a lot of the exits, exit points that used to be there and onto the main roads. So there's been, there's some fire folks that live in that neighborhood and they've talked a lot in the past about fire safety and evacuations, which you can actually make the argument for most neighborhoods around Tahoe in that manner. But this particular neighborhood, this has been brought up. And, and then, you know, one of the things that I've noticed in that neighborhood is the parking is very limited in that area. There is high density of, of houses and there's a limited amount of road, you know, side of the road parking. So a lot of the neighbors, especially in the south area, and the Commissioner Hales noted was, people put cones in those areas to prevent people from parking there that have V H Rs. And so they don't park in their neighborhood that live in that, in that maybe next door or down the road. And that's been true for other neighborhoods too. These are some pictures that were provided to the V H R Board from some people in the, on the V H R Board. So these are some past, well, the left is last year, I think. So you can kind of get a, I think we were inundated by snow last year. On the right is an example of a car crash on the turn there around Highway fifty. And then we've seen other issues in, in and around that area. And these are, I believe, different accidents. So these are just examples of, just to show and tell of some of the things that could happen. Doesn't mean that they are going to happen in the future. So generally, what happened is the V H R Board met on November twenty ninth and they, they spent about two and a half hours, I believe. And there were four members present at the time that went through the neighborhood. And we went, we use flip charts and I have some pictures of flip charts that you probably saw in the packet. And then these are just the general advisory board recommendations and then I can talk to the details. The first one was to reduce the occupancy to six and the vehicles to two. So I do have a, I do have a, what it currently is in the backup and I'll show you kind of where we're at on that. But generally, right now, most of the, most of the rentals, I think, are eight and ten occupancy and, and most of the vehicles that are allowed are greater than two right now. So that, the idea was to reduce. The second one was to reduce density. And so in this vernacular, it was to reduce the five units that are pretty much right next to each other on the south end of the neighborhood, as well as just make a general rule for the whole neighborhood, the sunset on permits on January fifteenth of next year. And what we would do to replace that would be to conduct a lottery to reallocate permits in April of this year at the desired density level. Now, so this, just so we all know that the neighborhood density is fifteen percent and that hasn't changed. However, we wouldn't get to fifteen percent, I don't think, based on the current permit holders. If we were to, if we go about the reallocation of permits based on the clustering that we'll talk about on the next one. But what we do is conduct a lottery and, you know, there is, I think, the, the most fair way that I can think of is to use the bingo machine over at the senior center and bring it to a V H R meeting and do it on camera. And just use the, the map and stick the pins in it and just keep this going order. So the first, the first person that gets drawn would be the golden ticket. And then after that, it would be based on the density requirements going forward for the rest of the neighborhood. And then the last one is reduce clustering. I, I accept Commissioner Lyle's question to me about my, my funny looking little plot I put up there. But the intent of it was to talk about the three lot proximity requirement. It's basically in any direction. The neighborhood unfortunately is not a grid. It's kind of misshapen different lots, but it would generally be two empty lots. So it'd be one, one V H R, two empty lots, where there would be no V H Rs allowed around that rental. And then a V H R would be allowed beyond that for the next lot. And then the same thing as you explode outward. And then impose the new requirement during the reallocation of the permits. The fourth one is, you see it kind of reduced. There was also a fourth item that didn't get passed by the Board of County Commissioners or from the V H R Board. And then where the V H R, the B O C C liked the, didn't like that, this particular idea, was to reduce the rentable nights. We have had, we have been able to calculate from H D L and T O T taxes about how many nights per year a rental gets used. It gets a little hard when you do it by day. We can do monthlies. But there was some questions about maybe a ninety, a thirty day limit per year and just allocate thirty day limits for the whole neighborhood per year. The question was, is trying to figure out how to, it's, it's more of a reactive fine at that point, because you're not going to know about thirty days until you catch them, right? And so, and talking to the code enforcement in South Lake Tahoe, they've had a lot of problems with that enforcement. And so we could, we can do that. It would just, it would be a little bit more challenging, it wouldn't be as clean. So it'd take a little more work on, on our part, but that's okay. But they decided not to do, pursue that particular avenue, so you won't see it in the code. This is a, my, sorry, my writing is not the best, but this is, I was trying to move them along. So I, I do flip charts and so we did flip charts in the meeting. And this is, the presentation is kind of built off of this, but this is kind of the ideas that came up. They had a lot of really good ideas, adjacency and is it every, you can see every, on the second one on the bottom, is it every third lot, every second lot, every fourth lot? So there was a lot of discussion, but, and they thought it through a lot and, and came up with some good ideas. But this is just an example what's sitting in my office right now on the wall. So this is a little bit more detailed about, you know, I showed you one, two and three. This is number one in more detail. The proposal was to reduce the occupancy of V H Rs, to sick occupancies, occupants per night, and then reduce the parking spaces to two, right? And that would be effective at the time of permit renewal. So that means even this year, so that would be effective immediately. The rationale is listed on here on vehicle reduction. As we talked about already, if you're familiar with that area, Lincoln Park, based on the, the feedback we've gotten from many people and just being in the neighborhood ourselves, it could be a dangerous neighborhood to access and exit due to its, due to the way you get in and out. Typically, in a lot of cases, when you, you rent a, a house in, through Airbnb and stuff, you don't know exactly what the address is, so you pay for it. And so you're going to get resident, people that come up to visit, probably from the Bay Area or surrounding areas down there that come up and don't know exactly where to turn. Maybe they stop on the freeway or the highway, Highway fifty, try to make a turn. So I don't know, it could be dangerous. Of course, there, I don't know how many accidents there has been there, so maybe nothing, not much is happening. But it's, it's, when you traverse the neighborhood, it, it appeared to many people that it's dangerous. The idea also was to reduce the amount of visitors in the neighborhood by reducing the vehicles, right? So if you reduce people, you reduce cars. That was the thinking. There was a couple of V H R Board members that were sitting there with calculators and calculating the reduction in cars. That may or may not happen, if they were full time residents, there could be more cars there too, I don't know. So that's, that's up to the eye of the beholder. The, yeah, the, the idea was occupancy and the vehicle reductions were hand in hand. So if you reduce the cars, you reduce the occupancies, you, or maintain the occupancies, you're, but there was a thought that people could ignore vehicle restrictions anyways, because vehicle, vehicle, any kind of citations are very difficult in this county. Because, you know, there is this difficulty with, you know, if they're on the street, the sheriff coming out and tagging them or towing them, they just don't do it, do it very often. So it's been, we've had a lot of problems with trying to impose requirements on cars in some of these neighborhoods. The rationale for the six occupants, the, the V H R Board felt that the air, the house would be, or the, the requirements would be large enough to accommodate a family, small enough to significantly reduce the total number of visitors in that particular neighborhood. And then lastly, the math was done that there were twenty six permitted parking spots. I don't know if that, that calculates correctly on your stuff that you got. A two vehicle cap would reduce that number significantly. So if you have, you know, with the new requirements, if there were four that, four locations with two cars each, that's eight instead of twenty six. So there'd be less cars on the streets, perhaps. That's the thinking. The second idea on reducing density, which was approved, was the total number of V H Rs. This is the background, the V H Rs allowed within a residential community. And so right now, Lincoln Park is at eighteen percent. And so the, the, the density requirement would be fifteen percent going forward. And then there were proposals that set an approximate appropriate density limit. You know, fifteen percent would be six V H Rs, ten and four, four V H Rs and so on. The, the B O C C adopted fifteen percent for the Lincoln Park neighborhood in the, in the recitals. Did this move a page? And then I talked a little bit about this at the beginning. We would impose a sunset date of January fifteenth of next year. Why the fifteenth and why not January first, you may ask? Well, typically, people are up there on a holiday over the weekend, January first holiday. So we, you know, we don't want the owners to have to kick out people on the morning of January first at twelve oh one, so they don't get a fine. So the idea was to be, give them a little bit of time to not book any vacations in those particular homes based on that date. And then the future would be to reallocate the permits through a lottery system, which I talked about being the, the bingo machine or, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we set up. And then they would be chosen through the lottery system. As I mentioned, we would start with the first one, which would have the golden ticket, and then they work our way down the waitlist. And the people that don't get selected would go back on the waitlist. And then they can renew for up to three years per year, just like they do today. And then at the end of the third year, on January fifteen, twenty twenty eight, and I think that says twenty, twenty fifth in your packet, I changed it's the fifteenth. In twenty twenty eight, it would be the three years, we'd start all over, revoke all the permits, go through the same process we're doing in April this year. And then the rationale was fair, is that it treats all permit holders the same. So as we know, there are some neighborhoods that, like Beach Club, that have a waitlist that it'll be my grandkids before they get to get a permit. So it, it's, they can, they can, this would happen more immediate. And it's fair and equitable. It reduces the density other than, other than through attrition. The three year limit distributes the benefits of a V H R permit evenly, so it's not first come, first served, but it kind of is, I guess, if you got, talk about the first one getting the golden ticket. And then January fifteenth sunset date, I talked about that. And then we would do the lottery in April, May this year. That way, there's plenty of time to prepare for the next year. So when January fifteenth comes, some of those folks lose their permits. Others would be able to continue on, pay the fee, move on. Okay. And then the last one is the clustering. So Lincoln Park's neighborhood is not evenly distributed. And you can see it on the, the big map over here or in your packet of thirty nine parcels. They're mostly in the south end of the seven active V H Rs. As I mentioned, they're in the, they're in the far end of the development. The proposal would be a three lot proximity requirement. So as I mentioned, my, with my haphazard squares, it would basically be a V H R, two empty spots, adjacency. And then you would have a V H R allowed on the third lot beyond that. And that would just be imposed across the whole neighborhood. And the rationale, spacing improves safety, as we talked about on the congestion. The current V H Rs are clustered. You know, it would, it would allow re permitting per year for up to three years. And hopefully, it would, it improved the, the neighborhood a little bit by reducing the clustering overall and for the, for the residents. This is the fourth one, I, I have the rationale up there, I didn't want to leave it out, but it's not going to be addressed unless you want to address it. And then, just before I go into questions, I, this is the slide, it's not in your packet, you probably have the, the map. And the current permit holders, I added the parking up there, just so you know what the parking is. So I think that should match what's, what you guys have. Now, is there any questions?
Thank you very much, Ernie. Before we get to questions, I do want to thank Ernie and A J and the rest of Ernie's staff for the outstanding work that they've done. They've worked long and hard on this, they've had a number of issues that they've come up, that we've had to deal with. And they are excellent staff members who produce excellent work. I also want to thank Mickey Hempler, who's here as Chair of the V H R Advisory Board and her members. I did listen to the entire meeting that they had on this matter, as I've listened to many of their meetings. They are very thorough, they're very thoughtful. I do happen to disagree in, in lots of instances, but I never doubt the diligence of their work and the conscientiousness that they, they administer, the authority that they've been given. So with that said, I'd turn it over to Planning Commission members for questions that they might have of A J or Ernie and Mickey at any point, either during the questioning or after we're done with questions. If you would like to address the Planning Commission outside of public comment, you may do that. If you'd like to go now, you certainly may do that as well.
And Wilder, that didn't come out right. I just wanted to reiterate that when we started this meeting, I'm really proud of our board over these decisions we made. What I had to let everybody know is this isn't a why, this is a how. Because we all wanted to debate the why should we do this? But we were given specific requests from the B O C C. So that's how we came up with these decisions. Very thoughtfully done, trying to keep the residents, as well as the permit holders at the top of our mind for this, because it's not fair always to the permit holders. But in this case, we really can't be fair to them, because that neighborhood's gotten a little out of control. If you have specific questions for me, I will answer them. Otherwise, I have just a few comments that I wanted to make from some of a public comment that came in, specifically Heidi Gunter's letter. Her comment was, if this is an unsafe neighborhood for visitors, why is this not unsafe for the residents? And this is something our boards talked about a lot. My answer to this is, when you have a neighborhood like this and you bring additional visitors in, you exacerbate an already bad situation. I feel like it puts a liability on the county, so that if there is an emergency and we have permitted all these V H Rs and cars and people in there and there's a problem, then it could come back on the county. And that is something we talked about at our meeting. So residents make a choice to live there. Vacationers have been allowed by the county. have been allowed by the county. So I was concerned about county liability. The other part in coming up with this idea was so that we could set a template for future problems in neighborhoods just like this. So that we wouldn't have to go back to the drawing board. Specifically the proximity, because that's come up a lot at some of our meetings from public speakers who are concerned about their neighborhood because there's maybe a cul-de-sac and all of the V H Rs seem to be on that cul-de-sac, which could be a good thing and a bad thing, depending on whether they're a person next door to the cluster of V H Rs. So our idea was to set kind of a standard so that down the road, if we had to make these decisions again, we've already got the template in place. So unless you have a question for me, that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much, Mickey. Again, congratulations for you and your board for their outstanding work. Questions that members of the planning commission have for either Ernie or Mickey? Paul, your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say to both of you, uh, Ernie and Mickey, the rationale that you put into this, uh, as to why you made the recommendations in the face of the Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Hale's obvious, um, reliance on the work that you do. And notwithstanding the last B O C C, uh, meeting on density, so I'll ignore that just for a moment because it was referred back to the V H R committee. So I think it's consistent. This is the product of brilliance. I am going to recommend that Tahoe Beach Club take a very close look at this and make an application to the county because it rotates the advantages of having a V H R permit. And I am a V H R permit holder. Hell, I'd like it till the end of time, but I think this is much more fair. And it examines the character of the neighborhood, which is primary. Don't change the character of the neighborhood. It's okay if you make money with your home, but don't change the character of the neighborhood for the residents that are already there. And, and I, I just think it's a, it's a product of brilliance. Both of you have to be commended for this. You can imagine, uh, which way I'm going to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Members of the planning commission, questions? Mark.
So I guess my question is, is this driven predominantly for safety reasons? Or is this solely because we're above the 15% cap?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, uh, it was driven for the safety. Mostly safety.
And so my next question would be to AJ, has the district attorney reviewed this ordinance and they believe that it is defendable?
AJ Hames from the district attorney's office. Uh, yeah, I think the, the ordinance, uh, within its own recitals tries to encompass the rationale, both of the advisory board as well as the Board of County Commissioners. And I believe it is supported by a rational basis. And it appears to be consistent with, uh, our Board of County Commissioners and the policies that they've adopted and, and followed.
Have we talked to Tahoe Douglas Fire or anybody since they're the people in charge of safety?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, uh, Tahoe Douglas Fire had, is actually a participant at our board meetings. So they are part of the, uh, discussion and they do, um, provide input as needed or as they feel they need to.
Okay. Um, you talk about residents and fences not having any setbacks. Has anybody looked to see if these are up to code? Or maybe we could, if they're not up to code, have them removed so that all of the residents, not just the, uh, visitors would be safer?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, I, I'll defer that to the district attorney's office on the code piece of it.
Could you just repeat that question again?
So I'm just looking for other alternatives to improve the safety of the neighborhood. And a lot of them would be if we have these fences that won't allow you to look down the road or see around a corner. Is there anything in code that can, that the county may want to use to have the residents remove their fences, make them lower or something like that to make it more safe?
AJ Hames again from the district attorney's office. Uh, our code typically doesn't apply retroactively. And so for example, our code dictates fence height. And there's a different height for the front of the house versus the back of the house, the side of the house, et cetera. But if, you know, a fence has been there, typically it's not enforced. It, that, that's sort of grandfathered in, so to speak. It's considered a, uh, a pre-existing use. It's an inconsistent use, but it's, since it's pre-existing, it's not subject to the newer code. And that's also not always the case. Oftentimes, um, new codes can be applied to old situations. And in this case, for instance, the density would be reduced through a mechanism of, you know, de-clustering. But if you're just talking about safety, and I think this addresses more than just safety, I think it addresses safety, it addresses clustering and it addresses a general policy consideration of the board of where they want V H Rs generally. But if you only wanted to fix safety, there are many ways you could do it. You wouldn't have to do it only through the V H R ordinance. You could do it through other means like, I mean, you could do any number of things to increase safety in the area. This is not the only way of increasing safety.
Okay. I guess my question was more, if we know the fence is sticking out there, have we gone back to look through building permits or whatever to say, hey, that guy was here before we had any of these rules. He's good. This person kind of encroached upon the right of way and maybe we should tell him that he needs to improve that, bring it back a ways or?
AJ Hames again for the record, I don't know that that's been done in this case. I don't know if there's been any investigation into any supposed violations. If somebody was built, building within the right of way, they would need to obtain an encroachment permit. I don't know if anyone needs an encroachment permit or if anyone did receive one. I'm not sure that any investigation has been done into that at this point in time. Typically those investigations are initiated by complaints and to my knowledge, nobody's complained specifically about any of the the current structures or buildings in the Lincoln Park neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions from the members of the planning commission? Lori and then Maureen.
Thank you. Um, so Ernie, we did have a conversation about, um, adjacency and the, um, separation between the, um, V H R permitted, uh, properties. And just to clarify, um, would you explain how, um, in this southern portion of the, um, the neighborhood, we have, uh, we have five, um, V H Rs. How some of them are across the street from each other. Some of them are kind of facing a different direction. Can you address how the adjacency would be effective for the, the properties that are not in a straight line along a street?
I could speak generally. So in general, uh, for instance, if you have, uh, if you're, uh, if you, if you're against a frontage road and you have somebody behind you, that would be one empty lot behind you, or that'd be one location. The streets behind you or in front of you, they're not recognized. They, they're can, it's a contiguous, uh, property, right? So you would have a house across the street and another house over here, they, you know, that'd be kind of considered a, an adjacent property. So this, without counting streets, we would be looking at, you know, basically fence lines, you know, where the fence lines touch. In this case, depending on how the order turned out, um, if the, the red dot on the bottom, for instance, was the first, um, lottery pick, they was to get a permit. The, the red dot on the left and the two red dots in front of it or right to the side of it would be excluded from, they'd go to a waitlist. They would not be allowed to be permitted. That's why we call it the golden ticket. And then the red dot on the frontage road would be allowed because it's more than two lots away and so forth. So it's kind of generally how that would be looked at, um, based on the lot lines and where the properties are located. It's a little tricky with some of the funky property lines that you have to deal with. You know, so generally if, if somebody picks any one of these dots on the bottom picks a, is the first, the first ticket, the ones around it clearly are not going to be selected. The one that would be kind of at risk would be the, the one on the Lincoln Highway on the, the bottom right there, four up from the bottom there. If it depends on who picks before them. So I'm not sure if I explained that real well, but that's.
Thank you, Lori. AJ, uh, you have something to add. And then I would like to explain, uh, I did look up Lori Title 20 Appendix A, which is the definitions that are in county code. And, uh, the definition, uh, is labeled abutting or adjacent. Two or more parcels sharing a common boundary of at least one point. And we, we've debated this in the planning commission in the past and we generally follow the rule that if it's next to or adjoining, it's called adjacent, even across the street. And, um, in, in further explanation, and I don't want to take, uh, words out of your mouth, uh, uh, Ernie, but when you have a two lot adjacency, you're really extending it, uh, to anything that touches more than two lots beyond, uh, uh, or less than two lots beyond, or two lots or more than, two lots or less than beyond the, uh, the lot in question. So it would be pretty problematic on the five lots that are in the southern portion. If I would be the judge, any one of those that were picked, all of the other ones would be excluded. With the possible exceptions of the one, the furthest south and the furthest towards fifth highway 50. But I think under the, the, uh, current drafting of the ordinance, it would be prob- problematic for all of those, uh, uh, under adjacency. AJ, did you have something to elaborate or clarify?
Yeah. AJ Hames from the district attorney's office. Just to build on that, I think that, uh, the, the code as presented would say each V H R within the community must be separated from any other V H R within the community by at least two intervening residential lots that are not used as V H Rs. So you would follow that, the general rule of adjacency, I think, but the, the emphasis there is on, you know, residential lots. Uh, a road is not a residential lot. So you would count the road as, as a lot. You would count that more as like a fence line, like Mr. Straylo was saying.
Maureen, you were next.
Hang on. Um, Mickey can clarify this, but Mark, to speak to your point, it's not only safety that the board was looking at, it was also quality of life for the residents. That's correct, isn't it, Mickey?
Actually, Mark, to your question about, um, the fence lines and code and all that, um, besides this neighborhood being very old and there's some neighbors here or there's some residents here today that might speak to this during public comment. But, um, normally a lot of those things are handled through the very local, like an HOA or a G I D. Lincoln Park doesn't have an HOA or a G I D. They rely completely on the county for everything. That the homes are, most of them are very, very old cabins. It's, you know, legacy type homes. So, um, that's where we run into quality of life for some of the residents there. You, you get to the end of that street and you really have to turn around in somebody's driveway. And not everybody is, and we found this in a couple of neighborhoods, Maureen, you were with me that day where we were trying to turn around. And somebody came out and yelled at us for turning in their driveway. But in the snow, which right now we're very fortunate, you have more than we do. That name, that road is what 10 feet wide, nine feet wide, something like that. It's very, very narrow. So it becomes a very, um, dangerous situation in, in really all seasons, but mostly winter and summer because you have a lot more population in there in the summer. They're, they have a very high occupancy rate in the summer. And of course, in the winter, uh, you really only have a one way, you have only one way anyway. But it's a very narrow one way in and out. I don't know if I answered your question, Maureen.
Well, it was not only the traffic, but it was noise. And the number of people, I sat next to a young man when the board was hearing this item. And he was very, he said, I'm the last family in the neighborhood. And that's very, very sad. And he recognized that because of the price of the homes in there. He doesn't think families will ever come back. And he found that to be extremely sad. But there is a, a quality of life that needs to exist that can't be if you have the V H Rs and the people coming in and they're making noise and they're outside in their hot tubs and the, the drinking and the traffic coming back and forth, people in and out. And the board was trying to address that with diminishing the population, diminishing the, the number of cars coming in and out. And this is a start in bringing some of that livability back to the neighborhood. And I think it's a good start. I think we should hear what the public has to say.
Thank you, Maureen.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mickey.
Many of the commissioners have specifically said to us that they want, as the code says, to resemble a neighborhood, but they want people to feel like, um, they don't even know it's a vacation rental next door. I think that's probably pie in the sky because people that live there, they know that they're getting, you know, rotating people every week. But that's what they have been pushing for all along is to make it such a good program that you don't even notice that there is a vacation rental next door.
Thank you, Mickey. Other questions for, uh, uh, Ernie or AJ or, uh, Mickey? I have a couple of points that I would just like to, to go through, um, before we get to a public comment. Uh, first of all, the recitals, um, I, I am troubled by the continued use that, uh, we're, uh, trying to base this on the distance from high density tourist zones. Uh, I think that, uh, is a flawed, fraud precursor of what we're trying to do here. Uh, we have, we have distances that are further away from the, uh, high density tourist zones. So I don't think that should be a, a part of the recitals. I would move forward then and ask a couple of questions on, uh, the, the, uh, parking. I went through the neighborhood myself, uh, yesterday. I included, uh, some materials in the supplemental, uh, for pictures. And I think, uh, I'm concerned that the, uh, reduction in parking is so significant when, when in many cases there is adequate driveway parking. 1264 Lincoln Park, for example, uh, I think you could easily park, uh, three or four cars in that, uh, area. 1265 Lincoln Park, that could probably accommodate maybe four cars. 1268, uh, uh, this picture is not very good, but the, the, uh, uh, garage was available for V H R parking. So that would be at least, uh, four could be accommodated there. 1273 has two areas. This one is snow covered, but as Mickey knows, a lot of people, uh, take their parking wherever they can get it and they park on the, uh, the, the snow areas. The other side, it's a, it's a dirt and, uh, that's a, a legitimate parking space in, uh, in the Tahoe area. So, uh, that causes me concern. Um, then going to the question of, uh, of reduced density, uh, Ernie or Mickey, if you could comment on that, one of the, uh, the proposals is, uh, uh, three year permits. And then after that, uh, those on the waitlist are giving priority. I seem to be of the opinion that, uh, if you would go on a waitlist and you have to wait three years, if you're owning a property that's currently used for a V H R, I doubt whether you're going to leave that property as is for three years to, in the possibility that you would get on the waitlist. Don't you think it's more likely that those people are going to either sell their property and somebody's going to move in and be a full-time resident? Or they're going to rent it out as a long-term rent. They're not going to just leave it vacant for three years, waiting for their name to rise to the top of the waitlist. Any thoughts or observations on that?
Were you asking, Ernie?
I'll ask either one of you if you want to answer.
As far as the car part, I just want to say that. As far as the car part, I just want to say that one of the reasons, the main reason we want to reduce cars is we reduce emergency exits. When you, when there is an emergency, you have fewer cars to get out. As far as, I'm not like you now. The other question was about.
The, the density and the likelihood of anybody who is on the waitlist after three years leaving their property or converting it to something else and then going back to a VHR?
They're very, well, maybe unintended consequences, and we did discuss this at our meeting, but because we needed to find a way to do this, this is what we came up with. I would suspect there are two people that have multi-permits that will have to give one up by October. I would suspect that would be a consideration for maybe one of them or both of them, I don't know. I wouldn't suspect they'd leave it vacant for three years. They'd either rent it out full-time, or they'd use a property more themselves, or they would possibly sell their property. But it's like any investment. Sometimes we make good investments, and sometimes we make bad investments, and sometimes we have to change our business plan. And I don't think that's something that we as a board have to consider. It's like when someone gets a permit pulled because they made a violation. They made a bad decision, and if we decide to pull their permit, it's because they didn't follow the rules, and in the end, it ruined their business decision. I, I just don't think it's something that we need to be involved with as an advisory board, because we're not taking it away tomorrow morning. We're giving people time to be able to contemplate what to do.
Thank you, Mickey. Ernie?
That was Mickey Hempler, for the record. This is Ernie Straylo, for the record. I just have a comment on the parking. So I, I personally review every permit for parking, and, and I usually err on the conservative side based on the occupancy of the, the residents anyways, right? So the criteria we use is the, the county established parking spot minimum, which is nine feet wide, 20 feet deep. We also require a six-foot egress. I'm not, I didn't look at the pictures that are in the packet that you, that you have, but usually when we, when we look at, when we look at permits and permit renewals, we take into account both the size of the parking area and the garage. And believe it or not, we've, when we've gone into homes, we're, they'll show us the garage. It'll be just fine, you can park a couple cars in there, and then you come back a month later, there's canoes in there, right? And so there's, so, you know, if, if it's an eight occupancy and there's enough for two cars in a, in a driveway and two in the garage, I'll give them three, you know, for parking, and that's it. And I try to keep it, I try to keep it very minimal as I, as much as I can. Also, you have to recognize is during the day, the code allows for two X occupancy or visitors, I guess. So while they're only supposed to have the same amount of cars, you know, it doesn't double the amount of cars, it doubles the amount of people, right? Chances are, cars still show up, right? And so the idea is to try to declutter as best as we can, the neighborhoods, without having to over-police the neighborhood with cars, because that's our, one of our biggest complaints is cars parking, right? So hopefully, it, it seems to have gotten better, because we did have 10 occupancy houses with six cars or seven cars allowed, and we've done away with that. So hopefully, it continues to get better. So I think that that's, that's a consideration on your, your charts.
Thank you very much, Ernie. And then Mickey, I think you're absolutely right. If you're in business, the county doesn't guarantee that you're going to have your business in, in a month or a year, and if there's violations, then the permit can be pulled. I would note that Ernie put in the packet, page 370 of the seven properties, there have been no validated complaints in the last 12 months. And Ernie, if you'd go back another year after that, I would hazard a guess, there's probably no complaints in the last two years for any of these properties. If you have more data, I'd be happy to hear that now.
Ernie Straylo, for the record, yeah, typically, I went back a year because the code is pretty much, the, the code revision we did last year is pretty much for the permit lifecycle for that previous year. So when we go to renew a permit, we look for that past year. We can't go back to 2013, or 2019, or 2022. It's passed, right? And so we, we look at the most, the 12-month historical information for the code, as well as for tier threes, because they have to have a clear record if they want to be a tier three, permit tier two also, for the same reason. So, yeah, so in, in, in the backup there, I did put the amount of code violations, if there were any, on there. Is that what you're reading from? Okay.
And then I would also make the point that we have not received any public comment in opposition to VHRs in Lincoln Park. And you're, you correctly noticed the entire neighborhood, and the sign was there for all the permanent residents, if they wanted to offer their opinion, and we have received no complaints. I would also note, when it comes to the, the density, and the recitals make this a, a case for the ordinance, there are no tier threes. Am I correct, Ernie, in this, in this area? No tier three permits, which are the larger permits?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, you are correct. There are no tier threes in that neighborhood.
Thank you. And then again, on, on the question of density, you put in your rationale that this is fair, and that it treats all permit holders the same, all have the same chance of each being chosen in the lottery. And you're correct that they all have an equal chance, but when you look at the, the expiration dates of the permits, they all vary, and you're going to find 1270 Lincoln Park Circle, their permit expires on November 30th, 2024, so November of this year. So if they would choose to renew their permit, their permit would only be valid for two and a half months until January 15th. So you are discriminating against those who have permits that would expire, and they would have a very small window to continue their VHR, otherwise they face the possibility of being excluded from the program almost immediately. So I think that's, that's an observation that I have that I'm trying to come to grips with, whether that's a, a fair, a fair way to do it. Yes, Ernie?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, so I have done density studies around the whole township, and typically along the lakefront, including Lincoln Park, in November, December, there's typically not very many rentals, according to our density information that we've gotten from HDL through TOT remittances. So usually, the, the peak time of season for that particular neighborhood is during the Memorial to Labor Day corridor, which is typical for most of the lakefront properties.
Thank you. Then my last observation is on the clustering issue, and Mickey, you might want to address this. There's two points of view on the clustering. You provide the rationale, Ernie, that spacing improves safety because it eliminates contestant points, but I believe it's your VHR advisory board member, one member kind of posed the question of, well, what if we have four or five VHRs, and they're all located next to each other? Then the only people they're going to bother, and the only clustering problems you're going to have, is they're going to cluster amongst themselves, and it's not going to disturb the, the, the rest of the full-time or part-time residents. So I think that the clustering issue is a, is a complex one, and I think one could argue that VHRs would be better clustered than spaced out, and they would disturb less of the neighborhood if they were done in that manner, as, as we have in this example.
Mickey Hempler, for the record, there are two schools of thought on clustering, and in some areas, it works well. I don't believe, and I don't believe the advisory board believes, that in this case it works well because of the safety issues.
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate all the hard work you have done on this and that of your advisory board. Other questions? Paul?
I haven't changed my view. I've listened to the discourse between you and the commissioners. I, I agree with your position, Ms. Hempler, because what if you clustered them all at the opening, at the beginning, right? And you'd have eight or 10 cars there, and you'd have nobody able to leave in a conflagration of fire or similar emergency. So I agree with you. This is the best solution, which is why I said it was brilliant at the beginning, and I still believe it. There is something, though, that our chairman brought up that I need to inquire about in the recitals, and I think it's a point that was well-taken. The recitals indicate that Lincoln Park is a significant distance from a high-density tourism zone, or high-density tourism zone. What is high-density tourism zone? What is the high-density tourism?
Mickey Hempler, for the record, we did not see the red line. We made conceptual recommendations to the county commissioners. They accepted those. The actual red line was done by staff, so I can't respond to any of that. I'm sure Ernie or A.J. can.
The, yeah, A.J. Haines from the District Attorney's Office. The South Shore Area Plan includes a section where the casinos are that's designated as high-density tourism zone, and that specific area, the casino corridor, as it's usually called, is designated for future development to accommodate high numbers of tourists. That is the rationale that was used by the Board of County Commissioners to pass their recent amendment to code that banned VHRs north of Cave Rock State Park, and this neighborhood is directly south of Cave Rock State Park. And so to the extent that rationale applied just north of State Park, it would, it would be reasonable to assume at least, maybe not in support of a full ban, but it, it would certainly be one of the factors that the board would likely include among those to justify the changes to the Lincoln Park neighborhood as well.
Understood. So what you're telling me is that there is a common understanding with respect to the high-density term, tourism zone, and this is beyond, or a distance that it requires a remark in the recitals for support. Now, this is inconsistent with some of the things that we've gotten. I did receive something from a fellow named Rick Ray, and I think everybody got a copy. Everybody except for Commissioner Tarkanian, apparently he was omitted, which is an interesting observation. But his position was that, what do you mean? And that's why I asked you the questions. That's what I assumed, but thank you for making it explicit.
Thank you, Paul. If there's no other questions from members of the Planning Commission, I think we can go to public comment. Again, come to the podium and state your name, print your name on the pad, and you will have three minutes for a public comment.
I own 1270 Lincoln Park Circle. So in the beginning, there was a lot of talk about safety, and so one of my questions was why was one of the recommendations not to put in like a stop sign, or a blinking red light, or some other? Right now, there's just a crosswalk, and then there's like a yellow light that you can hit when you cross the street, because I do cross to go over and like go hike up Cave Rock. So if we were to put in some other measure that would help people, you know, turn into the neighborhood, that would benefit the residents and anybody visiting. The other thing is, like, I'm not sure that either of those accidents that were shown were actually someone trying to access the neighborhood, rather just people coming around that turn on 50 pretty fast. And then there was, I think, a picture of like snow removal. Again, like, we don't have an HOA or a GID, so it is the responsibility of the county, you know, to plow those roads. Obviously, like, if I look outside and I see that it's like that, I might go out there and, you know, do it myself. But in terms of, you know, like, the visitors and the residents, I think that we both deserve services from the county. So would it be like restricted or something like that, you know, just because there's like more tourists in that location? But one of my things, the clustering issue, I think that was something that you had touched on, so like, I, you know, I think I would actually say that that was better, that they're kind of clustered together. But in the case of one of these like large properties that has something like 10 bedrooms or something like that, there's nothing to stop them from saying, okay, well, I can't have vacation home rental, I'm now going to rent to 10 ski instructors and 10 lifeguards in the summer, and then you'd have the same issue with the amount of people in, in the properties, you know, because they'd be able to rent it on a 30-day basis or on a long-term basis. So that wouldn't even really restrict the amount of people that are in there, because, you know, everyone says that we need affordable housing, and that's something that I would look at doing if, you know, I couldn't get someone in there. And then, yeah, I think there was a lot of talk about the parking on the street and everything. I don't think there is any street parking allowed in, in the, the area. So, I mean, everybody has to park on their own property. I think the only time we've really seen an issue is like July 4th, one of our neighbors who's not a vacation rental, they have a huge party, and they have cars all over the place. That can't be regulated by this board or anything else. I mean, you'd have to call in, you know, the actual like county police department or something like that to deal with it. So there are like plenty of instances of residences, you know, kind of going outside of their own parking areas. And then there was just, I think, I don't know, some talk about people not receiving the messages and whatnot. We're not, we actually don't get mail in that neighborhood. It all goes to P.O. boxes, and then I have all my mail sent to my in-laws' house. So, I mean, I did get the notice, but maybe that's why some people didn't get it, because we don't get mail delivered. And, yeah, so, I mean, my, I'm, I'm in opposition to this. I think that reducing it to having the 15% density that every other neighborhood has would be nice, and instead of like over-policing us down to what this is, basically saying how far apart they can be and whatnot. That's all.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Ellie Waller, thank you for the opportunity. I attend, I attended the November meeting. I want to thank the enforcement staff, Ernie's staff, advisory board. The interaction and respect between the board is exemplary. They, they really took this to task. When you sit there, watching the meetings and participating are two different things, and I think it's great. Everybody should watch the meetings if they can't attend. For future discussions, we're talking about safety right now, but complaints do come into play. And I think when the board goes back to revisiting the ordinance, any complaint, whether resolved or not, should be filed as a complaint. Resolution is one factor, but a complaint is a complaint for a data point and record-keeping, not just safety factors. I also want to remind everybody that the code is clear. This is not an entitlement. I don't care if it's a high-density tourist district, or south or north of Cave Rock, or within Lincoln Park. I think that always needs to come forward if litigation is in the minds of how we're addressing these issues. I, I don't believe that some of the issues that have been addressed by the Board of Commissioners are correct. With that said, there should be freedom for somebody at Cave Rock, or Lincoln Park, or the high-density tourist, tourist district to also have a vacation home rental. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name is Chad Gurken, non-verified complainer. Commissioner Waller, and members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to thank you for your attention to this issue, and thank you for those of you that have visited Lincoln Park. We are a unique community.
Excuse me, could you speak directly into the microphone, move a little closer to you? Thank you.
Sorry. The area of Lincoln Park is approximately eight acres. Lincoln Park is very small, very dense, and is one of the oldest-platted subdivisions in the state of Nevada. The neighborhood has direct access off the highway. The access is sloping with approaches that are downhill in both directions. The average speed is approximately 60 miles an hour along the highway. There's no turn lane, no acceleration lane, and within the neighborhood, our road width is approximately eight to 12 feet. Renters do not know how to navigate the turn off the highway, endangering the lives of those that live there. Residents that live there know how to mitigate the dangers somewhat. Again, we are a very unique community. I've lived at the lake over 40 years. I've lived on Kingsbury, in Skyland, Elk Point, now I've lived on Kingsbury, in Skyland, Elk Point, now Lincoln Park for about 15 years. We are, again, very small, very unique, and the issues of VHRs are amplified within the community, and the neighborhood has changed drastically in the last 15 years that I've lived there. We, unlike the other lake community neighborhoods, like the Beach Club, we don't have onsite security. Marla Bay has a protective association, Sephar Cove Property Owners Association, Skyland a GID, Lower Lakewood a GID, north of the Cave Rock Tunnel, everything's been banned now, so we are unique for that as well. Parking is a particular issue. Please keep in mind the recommendation of two cars is with reduced occupancy in mind. Most driveways can only accommodate two cars, and the cars that people bring to the neighborhood are typically large SUVs or trucks. Why? Everyone's going on vacation, you don't take the Prius, you take the big truck for the family that's going, taking, bringing kayaks, bikes, ATVs. So in closing, I would like to ask that you, as the Planning Commission, support all the recommendations that have been put forward by the VHR Advisory Board with the support of the county commissioners. I ask that you further rely on staff recommendations that Mr. Straylo has come up with. I think he's done a good job, and please see out the process to allow for the best possible outcomes for both vacation renters, or those that rent, and those of us that are still in the community. My family is the last family in the neighborhood, unfortunately. We've seen a number of families go, and the VHR issue has been a very large part of that. So we appreciate your recommendations, and we'd like to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Patrick Taylor. I also live in Lincoln Park. I've lived there for 25 years. I'm the very last house on the south end. I don't know how many of you know, it sounds like some of you have gone down and seen the Lincoln Park. I don't know how many of you know the history of Lincoln Park. It's one of the very first subdivisions in the state of Nevada. It's over a century old, and that's so, when Kate, I believe is her name, was giving the instructions about land planning, so land planning down there was a century, over a century ago, so you can imagine what it's like. So it wasn't planned for what we have today. And I have three vacation rentals next to my house, and then one across the street. And what I see, and it happens all the time, is, yeah, they have a two-car driveway, but they park them so that they're, they can barely open their doors to squeeze in and out of there, and they have three or four cars parked in a two-car driveway. They got it in the dirt, anywhere they can get it, in between the trash cans and the fence, so that they can get as many cars and as many people into those houses as they can possibly do it. And then, when it's in the wintertime, say like last winter, it's insane, and they don't have any snow shovels or anything. We have private snow removal that the county pays for. So when that private snow removal, who does many neighborhoods around there, can get there, which might be that day, might not be till the next day, they come through, and in between that time, you never know what's going to happen with these cars. Sometimes they can get into the driveway, sometime they leave it halfway out of the driveway, because they get stuck in the berm, or they can't get it out. It got so bad that sometimes Chad takes his snow blower, goes up and down the street to blow out their snowberms so they get out of the street. Finally, last year, I bought a Bobcat, so I could get the snow out of the road so that they could get in and out. With the county, what they've proposed is a fantastic idea to help solve an issue that when I built my house 25 years ago, half of Lincoln Park was a dirt road. TRPA made me pave the road 10 feet wide from what is called the unnamed road that goes up from Lincoln Park Circle up to Old Highway 50. So I had to pave 500 feet of that road, and they made me do it 10 feet wide to have access to build my home, because otherwise, if you do not pave access, TRPA won't let you build. So that's how wide the road is. And TRPA only requires a 15-foot driveway, so therefore, you can have a really small driveway, and many people do. And so we have a serious issue out there that they've addressed with some great recommendations. So I would really appreciate that you seriously consider passing their recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Guys, tired of seeing me yet? Tim Stevenson. I had the unique opportunity to map-spot for the census back in 2008. Things were slow in my art business. I had plenty of work, but things were slowing down. And I had, because I grew up at Galilee, right there, just north of Glenbrook, when we used to drive down into Glenbrook every day to the post office, and back when Cave Rock was a one-hoeler, it was a two-lane highway around. This, this community, which you're discussing, is extremely unique for Tahoe, and it deserves all consideration that the residents require. And this is not Glenbrook with 600 doors. Glenbrook, you may think it's this little, small area, but from Dedman Point out to Yellow Jacket, there's a tremendous amount of condos and houses and stuff, and, you know, to say, oh, well, these guys don't want it, neither does somebody at Glenbrook, you know, that's totally different thing. This is an extremely unique community at Tahoe, and I think it's up to the county and the board to protect that uniqueness for the, for the landowners and not make it, you know, a commercial deal. So I, I implore that you accept the conditions going on here. Dangerous to get off 50 and back on 50 from there, you know, and, gosh, I wish Manny's was still across the street. That would give us a little extra space to open it up. I miss that big old gorilla, but anyhow. Thank you very much for your time and, and making the effort to make this vacation rental regulation move forward positively and not become, hey, only for this or only for that, you know. I underlined before, vacation home rentals have been a major part of Lake Tahoe's allure to those out of town. And thank you very much for being forward-looking, and, and thank you to the community residents here who've put their time in together with a workable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Folks, a lot of time and effort has gone into this, these proposals and so on. I can see that.
Excuse me, if you could state your name.
Thank you for your patience and so on.
Excuse me, sir, if you could state your name and pull that microphone down.
Edwin Miller. I lived at Lincoln Park since 1968, so we built our cabin there then. And anyway, as I say, I can see a lot of effort has gone into the proposals we've listened to and so on. I live next door to a rental, a large, fairly large house and so on, that has, we've had excellent people for neighbors, rental people in there, and we've had some that were not quite as good, but change is inevitable. We see that, and the neighborhood has changed and so on. But I like the proposal of limiting the number of people there, because I've seen as many as 20 next door, and across the, there was a rental across from us. One time, there were 24 in there, and there's room for parking four cars. If you put two in the garage and two in the driveway, that'll actually stick out almost into the road. But there was as many as 24 or 25 people there, and it was a party of young, young people and so on, and most of them were well-behaved and so on. One person asked if they could park, asked me very graciously if she could park there, and I said, yeah, how long are you going to be here? Well, three days. And so I said, yeah. Next thing I knew, there were four cars there. So I just want to make the comment that I, if we're limiting it to six people, how do we enforce that? In other words, most of these rentals are through an agent or through a rental company that processes the people and so on. And I know that they probably explain the rules, but I think a lot of times that they are assuming there's going to be six or 10 people there, and there's twice that many or so on. But that would be my only consideration there. I would like to see something done, and I think you're on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hello, my name is Mary Martin. I live local, but I'm also part-owner of the 2070 Lincoln Park Circle, which is a very small cottage. We only rent to four people, and when it's not rented, I live local, I spend a great deal of time at the lake. I have never felt that it has been loud, it has been noisy, it has been unsafe, it has been the quietest neighborhood in order to enjoy a day, or a weekend, or a whatever at Lake Tahoe. I don't understand, I know there's some bigger houses down the street, there's a vacation rental right next to ours that I know can rent to numerous, numerous people, and they've always been quiet as mice. I don't understand the car density issue. I know that there is no street parking, and on any given day, when I'm sitting out on the front porch having a cup of coffee, you can count on less than both hands the number of cars that go up and down the street and maybe have to turn around in somebody's driveway. I do not consider that dense. I do not consider that heavy traffic. The biggest traffic is usually the FedEx or the UPS truck that has to back up to come down the street. And with all due respect, that accident that you showed a picture of was on Highway 50 that was not part of the neighborhood. That was somebody that came one way or the other and took out tree trees, and I think that was very misleading to have that say that it was part of the neighborhood. And as you bring that up, that is the access to the neighborhood, because the street is not marked, there is a crosswalk, and there's a curve there that comes around by Cave Rock, and it is, it is a challenging area to enter and exit the community. But really, after you've done it once, you figure it out. So to sit there and say it's dangerous, it's dangerous for everybody entering that community, whether they're a vacation home rental or a homeowner. And if I have seen numerous noise, it has been on the 4th of July by a homeowner that has lake-access property, that has cornhole in the streets, and all of their friends that come, and those are the people that are parking illegally on people's driveways that don't belong, people aren't there for the weekend, et cetera, et cetera. So the car issue is not going to be less dense by thinking that decreasing vacation home rentals is going to make the, the community less occupied, because it will be occupied by full-time owners, it'll be occupied by rental people, by long-term rental people, and it's going to stay the same. So your answer is to figure out how to make the community safer to enter and exit the community, not the people that are there, because the safety belongs to all the people there, no matter who they are. So please, I'm against this.
Ma'am, ma'am, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. If the board members have additional points that they need to have clarified by Ernie or by A.J., we can start with that, and then we can move towards deliberation on the ordinance that's proposed. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ernie, one of my biggest hangups is the two-lot situation, because no two lots, well, I guess I don't want to say no, there may be some lots that are the same size, but probably for the most part, they're, some are a little smaller, some are a little larger, and so I respect the board's decision in terms of trying to come up with a solution. I just wonder if, if some sort of radius was deliberated, if that's a possibility to create a certain distance, so we're not saying it needs, you know, it's a lot, because one lot may be very large and one lot may be very small, and it would seem to me that a radius would, would make more sense.
Ernie Straylo, for the record, I'm a big fan of radiuses, so I think it's easier to manage on a radius scale, but, so I think that was your question. So a radius is easier to manage.
Was that something that was deliberated by the, by the board, and were there thoughts around that distance that, that we may be able to consider here today?
I don't recall specifically what they talked about, but I know Eldorado County, the county itself, on the west slope of the Sierras surrounding South Lake Tahoe, does a radial distance, and we brought it up in the past, over the last couple of years, as an option of density reduction overall in the, in the basin. I think in this particular neighborhood, the same problem with radius, radial distance was discussed, and it was thought that the lot distance was better, and that's why one of the, the flip charts I had had numbers scratched out, you know, they were trying to figure out, is it one, is it two, is it three? So I think that they weren't quite sure what the proper, or how far apart they should be, and they were discussing and deliberating that way. So I don't think at that point radial, this radial distance was discussed at that point.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just have a couple other comments. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, in the second paragraph of the recitals. I have no idea why distance from high-density tourism zones and usage that does not resemble the existing residential uses made by residents is included in here. I'll remind this body that when we voted last month, it was seven to zero, that, that was just arbitrary and made no sense. Now, I recognize that the Board of County Commissioners did not agree with us, or at least three of them didn't, but again, this is, this is before us once again, and my position hasn't changed, that this is just completely arbitrary and beyond the red lines that we're considering. I think both of those should be struck.
Thank you, Bryce. Any additional questions that we need to ask of staff before we move to the proposal or the ordinance before us? If not, what I would propose as a means of simplifying and expediting our deliberations, if a motion could be made to adopt the ordinance as drafted, and then we can have, not a vote on that at that particular time, but then we can vote to amend the main motion, and that amendment could remove portions of the recitals or could modify portions of the red-lined language that was, that would be drafted. If that's acceptable to my colleagues, I would hope we could move, move in that fashion, and then we could clarify, simplify, and expedite the process. Paul?
I think that's a good way to proceed, Chairman. I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners a passage of ordinance 2023-1635 in its entirety, amending Chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code. The findings are supportable with respect to the amendment, which we must be mindful to make an amendment to an existing ordinance. to make an amendment to an existing ordinance. The ordinance makes the changes in its description enforceable, which is critical. And in the overreaching focus of keeping the continuity and character of the neighborhoods is satisfied by the proposed ordinance. So that is my motion.
Second? Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Dave. The motion is to recommend approval of the ordinance 2024-1635 as presented. At this point, then, I would ask my colleagues if they believe that there are changes in any of the four paragraphs on the recitals that they would like to offer an amendment to?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer an amendment if my colleagues so desire. That would be in paragraph two under recitals, the language that states distance from high-density tourism zones and usage that does not resemble the existing residential uses made by residents be struck.
Is there a second to Bryce's motion? I'll second the motion. Paul?
I am against the amendment because of the discussion that we had with both Mr. Strayblow and Ms. Hempler. It now, I have changed my opinion that the continuity and character of the neighborhoods is served by such a recital, and it gives further support why the neighborhood would be treated in a fashion that the ordinance 2024-1635 intends and focuses.
Thank you, Paul. My comment would be that this, whereas it really proposes a general rule, it does not reference specifically anything in Lincoln Park Circle. And that's not something that we have reviewed. It says there exists areas. It could be an area, it could be the Beach Club, that someone determines an area is a further distance from a high-density tourist or tourism areas. So I think it, it should be modified, as Bryce says, because it, it does not apply specifically to Lincoln Park as the second or the third whereas does. Any further discussion? Maureen?
Well, that one, should it be removed completely then and just go with the whereas the Tahoe Township first paragraph and just remove the second and go to the third paragraph?
AJ Haynes from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. The first recital is intended just to note that Tahoe is the, I mean, that that's taken from prior ordinances and from code. The second recital there is intended as a means of summarizing past rationales and justifications for previous code changes. And then the third and fourth recitals are intended to apply those same rationales, principles and concepts to Lincoln Park. And so within the third recital, you have discussion of the characteristics of the neighborhood. Also, at the very end of the third recital, there is a reference to the distance of that neighborhood from the high-density tourism zone. Again, that was the justification for the neighborhoods just to the north. Then the fourth paragraph continues that application of those principles to Lincoln Park specifically. So the first two paragraphs are setting forth general principles that have governed prior code revisions. And the second two recitals are applying those principles to the Lincoln Park neighborhood.
Thank you, AJ. I would tend to agree with you, Maureen. I would probably favor eliminating the entire second whereas, but I'd like to hear the sentiments maybe of Lori or Mark or Dave. And then we can see if there's a sentiment one way or the other. Or Paul, go ahead.
I recognize that our district attorney is not advocating a position, but rather telling us what is in support of a proposed action that we take to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the adaptation of 2023-1635. And I think that what Mr. Haynes has done is given a very, very persuasive argument why it should be left intact as the language has been drafted. That is to say, it provides the rational basis for this neighborhood and the rational basis for treating certain neighborhoods differently. And it supports the overarching issue, which is keeping the character of the neighborhoods, notwithstanding the fact that we have VHR within certain neighborhoods. So I, I think that it was persuasive to keep the language as is.
Thank you, Paul. Additional comments? Lori?
Thank you. I do not at all have the same amount of experiences you have as reviewing these VHR ordinances and regulations. Just reviewing that paragraph, it seems to be factually correct, maybe not specifically to Lincoln Park. But in the Tahoe Township, there are neighborhoods that have these characteristics. I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I will rely on the commission's expertise and past experience as to the appropriateness of leaving that paragraph in the recitals, though.
Thank you, Lori. Maureen?
Hey, I'll compromise. I think that AJ did give a very good explanation on why that paragraph should exist. Thank you. And I think the distance from high-density tourism zones should be removed, but usage that does not resemble the existing residential uses made by residents should stay because a VHR is not a residential use. And I think that that language, because it exists, and the third paragraph should be removed from there as well. But we can make a separate motion for that. But Bryce's point of removing it from paragraph two, I'll support that.
Thank you, Maureen. The motion on the table is to remove in the second whereas, distance from high-density tourism zones and uses, usage that does not resemble the existing residential uses made by residents. Let's, let's call a vote and then we'll move forward on the rest of the, and we'll do this by, by roll call. So if you're in favor of the motion to remove, vote aye. If you're, if you're opposed, vote no. Well, let's, let's take a roll call so we can have an accurate. Lori, we'll start with you.
No.
Paul?
Nay.
Dave?
No.
Mark?
No.
Maureen?
Not as the motion stands, no.
Thank you. Bryce?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So two votes aye, five votes nay, the motion fails. Other motions on the third or the fourth whereas?
I would like to make a motion, restate the motion on the second recital to remove the distance from high-density tourism zones from the second paragraph.
Maureen moves to eliminate the language distance from high-density tourism zones in the second whereas. Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds the motion. I think we can move right to a vote on this one then. Again, if you're in favor of removing those six words from that whereas, you would vote aye. If you're opposed, vote no. Lori?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about the objection. Maybe I just don't understand the context of removing it. And could we get some clarification? And it is entirely my bad for not having that background in understanding this issue.
My simple explanation would be that there are, there's a school of thought that distance from the casino corridor is not necessarily a valid reason to include or exclude vacation home rentals from a certain area, that there are other tourist areas in Tahoe besides the casino corridor that might bring a large number of people who want to stay in vacation home rentals. Paul, would you want to amplify or have your own explanation of that?
Certainly, for everybody, our chairman and this commissioner have debated these issues at great length on various amendments and other issues that have come up in the past. And in my opinion, the, it's significant to state the fact that it's away from the high-density tourist as defined and we discussed today, because the overarching reason why we have various restrictions on VHRs instead of open country is to maintain continuity and character of the neighborhoods. That dense area down by the casinos, I guess, is the character of that neighborhood is highly dense, commercial, and it's different from almost every other one, including the neighborhoods that may have other attractions that are tourist attractions. And that is why I would not vote in favor of this modification.
Thank you, Paul. The point I would make that I've made before is look at Zephyr Cove, look at Round Hill, look at Cave Rock State Park on Fourth of July, if you want to see a high-density tourist areas. Cave Rock State Park is abutting the Lincoln Park area.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of clarification?
Yes.
AJ Haynes from the District Attorney's Office. I understood the motion, to amend the motion, is to remove from the second paragraph the high-density tourism zone reference. I just would note there is a reference in the third paragraph to the high-density tourism zone as well. And so I'm wondering if the motion applies to both paragraphs or just paragraph two?
We were only speaking of paragraph two previously, so I just did paragraph two.
So if the motion were to pass, there would still be a reference to the high-density tourism zone in the third paragraph?
No, we'll take paragraph and then we'll go to paragraph.
We'll take that as it comes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Maureen.
And to speak to Lori's question, the school of thought is the only reason people come to Tahoe is to play the casinos, play in the casinos. They don't come for any other reason.
Can I ask another question? Sorry.
Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you. My understanding from maybe a comment earlier was that the justification as being distant from a high-density tourist zone, I'm sorry, I can't find it right now, was used in the previous ordinance to eliminate the VHRs from north of Cave Rock. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. So we'll go ahead with Maureen's motion to eliminate distance from high-density tourism zones in the second recital. And we'll do this again by a roll call. So if you're in favor of removing that language, vote aye. If you're opposed, vote no. Lori?
No.
Paul?
Nay.
Dave?
No.
Mark?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So in this, what's her four votes aye and three votes nay, so that language would be stricken. Additional motions on the whereases, number three or number four?
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the similar language in paragraph three whereby it says, and a significant distance from a high-density tourism zone also be struck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen seconds Bryce's motion to remove the similar language in whereas three. Do we have points of discussion we need to make on this? Paul?
I think there's a critical discussion, a critical distinction here that we cannot overlook. And that is, in the third paragraph, it says, whereas the Lincoln Park residential community. So this has to do with just the community, and it states a fact that it is far away from the high-density tourist zone. So it's factually accurate, and, and I think that this should fail, this amendment should fail. I mean, we can't ignore the truth. I know a lot of politicians in national politics try to, but I think for our purposes, we can't ignore the truth.
Thank you, Paul. And I would continue my same argument that Cave Rock State Park sometimes fills up by 6:30 in the morning on busy summer weekends. So it's a high-density area. That's the reason some of the traffic issues exist, because it is a high, high-density Lori?
Thank you. I do agree that the Cave Rock area is near a high-density tourist area, or Lincoln Park area is near Cave Rock, and that is a high-density tourist area. I believe the distinction that I was trying to come to terms with was whether or not the previous generalized whereas was factually correct or incorrect. And I believe there are neighborhoods in the Tahoe Basin that are farther away from any high-density tourist areas. But Lincoln Park, I don't believe we can make that, that statement factually.
Thank you, Lori. Dave?
Yeah, it's interesting because I think TRPA designates the casino area as the high-density area in Douglas County and in the Lake Tahoe area. So I think they're right in that. And so I think that that's what they're referring to, is that's what drew a lot of people from California to Lake Tahoe was the gambling area. That is the high-density area for commercial use.
Thank you, Dave. I may be mistaken on this, but I believe that you are exactly correct. The TRP made this designation first and that Douglas County has followed on with our ordinances to, to reference that in the same language. But I believe that was probably 15 or 20 years ago. And I think in my observation from living there over eight years, that has changed dramatically. The amount of tourists that come, as Maureen pointed out, just for the casinos in that area has diminished significantly. And the recreation in the other areas, beaches and ski resorts, has increased in a similar amount. And those areas now could be referred to by TRPA or by Douglas County as high-density tourism areas. Paul?
I don't disagree, but they're not currently. The high-density tourist area is as described today in our hearing by our staff and by our VHR advisory and as we heard from our district attorney. The reason why I agree with Chairman Walder's comments that there can be high-density areas outside of that tourist corridor, because if you look at it periodically, the Fourth of July, much of the basin is high-density tourist. But we're not looking at isolated holidays. This is a general statement consistent with prior observations of TRPA, consistent with the, with the comments that we've made here and what we've learned with respect to the definition of high tourist zone. So when it comes to Lincoln Park, I lean in favor of the residents that they are far away from the high-density tourist zone for this ordinance purposes.
Thank you, Paul. Additional comments or can we move to a vote? This would be on the third whereas, deleting the language, and a significant distance from a high-density tourism zone. Again, Lori?
Aye.
Paul?
Nay.
Dave?
Nay.
Mark?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So in this, there's five votes aye and two votes nay, so that language is stricken. Now, do we want to move to the fourth whereas? That has similar language in the first part of that whereas. If we want to leave that alone, we can move to the other issues involving the redline Okay, on the redline language, the more specific portions that I would point to are the permitting process. The concern that I have on the entire part of this language that is redlined and adjusted from the existing language is we currently have four sets of rules for VHRs. We have one set of rules for the Glenbrook unaffiliated areas, the non, or the HOA areas. So that's one set of rules. We have a second set of rules for the Glenbrook non-affiliated areas and the rest of Cave Rock. So those are totally banned. We have a third set of rules, if you look on page 380, number three, for Tahoe Village. That's the 25% density. And then we have a fourth set of rules for the whole rest of Tahoe. So we already have four sets of rules. So we already have four sets of rules. Now, what we're moving forward with, when you get to 2.5 on page 381, is a fifth set of rules. I think we have already gone to an extreme of confusing people and confusing the entire ordinance by adopting so many different rules for so many different reasons that are we going to end up, what do we have, Ernie, 38 different neighborhoods that you've designated? Are we going to end up with 38 different sets of rules?
Ernie Straylo, for the record, actually, we were joking today, there'll be an 80-page code here pretty soon at this rate. But yeah, there's 39 neighborhoods, but this will be the fifth set of rules.
Thank you. So my suggestion would be that people focus on page 381, item five. The first one is the rule for two intervening lots. The second one is the rule for a total maximum number of renewals for three years. The third one is no more than six occupancy at nighttime. And the fourth one is the parking restriction of no more than two. If any people want to offer amendments on any of those four areas or additional areas that they see as potentially troublesome. Lori?
I agree with Commissioner McClutts that the language of separating the potential VHRs, I think it would be difficult to administer, and I would support a radius distance from the property lines of the VHRs that are permitted of 100 feet. I believe that the lot widths in those areas are generally 50 feet, so that would preclude two adjoining lots in any direction.
Would that be a motion then, Lori?
Yes, that would be a motion to amend the existing motion.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I am in support of a motion to utilize a radius. I guess I would lean on Ernie and the advisory board in terms of some help here on what is an appropriate radius. You know, I don't know if it's 100, I don't know if it's 200, and I think it should be a radius versus adjoining lots, but I can't speak to what is appropriate or not appropriate. In the absence of some guidance, I'm inclined to go along with the motion and support it. So if, now's your chance to speak if you think it should be different.
Comments, Ernie or Mickey?
Ernie Straylo, for the record. Yeah, I mean, we've talked about radial. What we didn't get into is the radial. Every neighborhood is somewhat different in the township. And so 100-foot radial versus a 500-feet could be a football field to some neighborhoods. So Mickey and I have joked in Zephyr Cove, for instance, if you were to apply 500 feet in Zephyr Cove, you may only have two VHRs versus, you know, Upper Way or one of the neighborhoods in Tahoe Village or Upper Kingsbury, you know, where it would have a completely different impact, you know, just a street impact. So we haven't done a lot of studies, you know, from measuring property lines to see what the appropriate radial, radial suggestion would be, just because it wasn't something that at the time the VHR Board was interested in. But we have brought it up in the past, as I mentioned earlier, that Eldorado County does it, and it seems to, they seem to have some simplicity using that process.
Well, I think, again, we're talking about Lincoln Park right now. We're not talking about Tahoe Village or Zephyr Cove. And so these are much smaller lots, and so I would agree, 500 doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So, okay, thank you.
Mickey, did you have comments? Please.
Mickey Hempler, for the record. We did discuss proximity in radius versus lots. And because, well, I was waiting for Ernie to say what he just said, but he just said it. Because there's so many different areas that have houses further apart, closer together, for this particular area, radius didn't seem to work. We decided we wanted to go with lot numbers, and we actually went from three to two or four to two because we knew it was going to be, you know, too confined. But a radius in one neighborhood is going to be completely different in another neighborhood. This is not a one-size-fits-all. We may have to have 39 rules for 39 neighborhoods because that's what the BOCC has asked us to do, is to look at every neighborhood. But the template we were trying to put together for Lincoln Park that we could use other places was to go with lots because each neighborhood's different. They're small, or they're large, or they're in between. Or in the case of like a Tahoe Beach Club or, you know, community like that, that's a whole different conversation for a whole nother time. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Mickey. One suggestion I might have, and Lori, I'm not sure if you would agree with this, or Bryce, but we could change the language by deleting the two intervening residential lot language and put a radius as recommended by the director. And then Ernie, in his infinite wisdom, would say, Lincoln Park, the radius should be 100. Zephyr Heights, the radius should be 200. Beach Club, the radius should be zero or one foot.
Now, I do have something to say about that.
Paul, go ahead.
I'm just kidding about Tahoe Beach Club. But the key question for me is the way the ordinance is currently written, I'm making the assumption that it is easily enforceable, which is a paramount concern for residents in that area and all over the Tahoe Basin. The key question is, whatever we do and have something in place or restriction for keeping the neighborhood character, is it enforceable? Is the way the ordinance currently written enforceable?
Ernie or A.J.?
A.J. Haynes from the District Attorney's Office, this isn't legal advice, but just to try to offer some clarity, just I pulled up a parcel map from that neighborhood that's on file with the Assessor's Office, and most of the homes along Lincoln Park Circle do have 50 feet of street frontage. So if you were to, if you were trying to modify the recommendation of the advisory board and just sort of convert it from lots to feet, I think 100 feet, which was offered up by Ms. Lyle, is a pretty decent approximation of the two-lot spacing requirement, specific to this neighborhood. Now, that's what we're dealing with, is the Lincoln Park neighborhood. Obviously, other neighborhoods would be different, but for this neighborhood, I think 50 feet of street frontage is the average.
Thank you for that information, A.J. That's very helpful. I would add to what Paul said is enforceable is an important consideration, but fairness is also an important consideration. We want to be fair to all of the current VHR permit holders or future VHR permit holders. Mark?
So, I certainly understand radius, and I think for a global thing, if we could do this everywhere, that might work. But if we're doing it each neighborhood by each neighborhood, two lots away is simple for me to understand. If it's radius, I'm going to be saying, hey, I don't want a VHR. What point are we measuring the radius from? Is it the bathroom? Is it the kitchen? Or do we have to figure out the exact middle of the lot? And if it's the exact middle of the lot, is that right? Maybe it should be where the house is placed.
Or maybe the edge of the lot.
Well, anyway, my two cents is, I think that having two lots, I can certainly look at that. I can look at a map and say, okay, I understand the rule, and I would like to leave it like that.
Thank you, Mark. That's a very good observation. It's always depends on the definition of where you're measuring from. Bryce?
Bryce? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't belabor at this point, but I, Ernie, if I'm not mistaken, you've either looked into or communicated with your colleagues in adjacent counties, they utilize a radius. It works. I don't see why we simply can't kind of work with them, leave it to your discretion, or come up with a footage, you know, as A.J. mentioned, they do it, it works. You know, we're, we don't, I admire what you're doing and what the VHR advisory board is doing. It's admirable work, and every time you guys get somewhere, this board or the Board of County Commissioners just picks it apart, which it's really easy to sit here and pick apart all the dang work y'all have done. But if it's working somewhere else, I think we utilize best practices from other places, and you've mentioned that they do it and it works. So that was the suggestion.
Thank you, Bryce. Let's go ahead. Lori, if you have other observations, otherwise I think we're prepared to go ahead with your motion.
Yes, I would be happy to withdraw the motion or restate it. I do believe that staff and the VHR Commission have the most knowledge and the best ability to determine the appropriate radius for a different neighborhood, but I still believe that radius is a good defensible way to measure a setback. And in general, they've already, they're already using that on the notification lists for sending out the notifications of public hearings. The measurement's always from the property lines, so there's no need to reestablish where that measurement exists from. It's from the property line of the entitlement area or the permitted area. So I would be happy to make that, to change my motion to not have a specific 100-foot minimum, although I think in Lincoln Park, that is a really good distance requirement, but to leave it to the discretion of the staff and the VHR Board.
Lori, you're suggesting a modification to your original amendment to make the radius as recommended by the director?
Yes.
And the second on that was Maureen?
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Bryce, and do you agree with the modification of the amendment?
I do.
Okay. So what's before us is changing the two intervening residential lots to a radius as recommended by the director. Paul?
With all due respect to the amended motion to amend the original motion, this is what the Australians would call a dog's breakfast because it has no particular focus, and the enforceability issue is something that has been debated, discussed, and agreed upon, and it came to us. And that is why I would stick with the original amendment to 2023, pardon me, the original amendment to 20.622 as it's presented to us.
Thank you, Paul. I'll call the roll on this one. This is your amendment, Lori, on the radius restriction. Lori?
Aye.
Paul?
Nay.
Dave?
Nay.
Mark?
Nay.
Maureen?
Nay.
Bryce?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So there's three votes aye and four votes nay. So that is not adopted. Now, the questions are on B, C, and D, if people want to amend or discuss any of those. B is that permits may be only renewed twice for a total maximum duration of three years. I'll just state for the record, the problem I have with this is that the situation that I mentioned previously, I think if you start with a lottery and the winners of the lottery are allowed their permits, that the other permit holders will sell their properties or convert them to long-term rentals, and that will just exacerbate the traffic and the parking problems in the neighborhood. So my preference would be to eliminate that number B, letter B, completely. But if there's no sentiment there, we'll move forward. C, any interest in modification of nighttime occupancy shall be no more than six. D, the number of permitted parking spaces shall be no more than two. Again, my observation there is that's overly restrictive. If you have parking that's legal, you should be allowed as many parking spaces as Ernie determines. He is the final arbiter. But in some instances, I think the parking availability that I've seen is four in many instances, and two is overly restrictive and will cause harm with no measurable, no measurable impact on anything else. And other sections of the red line as drafted. The only other observation I have is I do believe that the January 15, 2025 date is too soon. I think that unfairly impacts a number of the vacation home rentals in the area. But if there's no sentiment on modifications there, I'd entertain other thoughts or suggestions. Paul?
I do have, that's a good point that you raised, and I'm just double-checking. So I'm not disparaging or questioning the judgment of our staff or of our VHR, but I have a question for our district attorney. Did you look and see that that date was defensible?
A.J. Haynes from the District Attorney's Office, it's, it's an effective date. I don't know that it's any more or less defensible than any other effective date.
Understood. So basically, legally, it doesn't go one way or another to extend the effective date or to shorten. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, A.J. Just to recap, then, we have a motion on the floor for passing the ordinance as amended, and we made a couple of different amendments. And I can try and recap that if that's helpful to people. We changed the recitals in one, two places, and we changed the, we changed the 5A radius. Those were the three changes? That one did not pass, I'm sorry. Okay. So we only changed the changes in the recitals.
Yes, just removing the comment that it is significant distance from a high-density tourism zone.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, A.J., for corrections. Anything else to elaborate on, A.J.?
Just to clarify for the record, so as I understand it, the motion by Paul was to recommend approval. That's been seconded and then subsequently amended to now the motion is to recommend approval of the ordinance as presented with two amendments. First, to the second recital, removing the reference to the high-density tourism zone. And second, in the third recital, again, removing the reference to the high-density tourism zone.
Thank you, A.J. We appreciate your keeping us on track legally and procedurally. Any comments before we have a concluding vote on this agenda item?
Just one.
Maureen?
I trust that, first, I want to thank the commissioners for their spirited debate on this ordinance, and I trust that the Board of Commissioners will have a livelier debate, and Mickey, I'll see you there. And it's going to be interesting to hear what they do with our recommendations, and I know that Lincoln Park will come out all the better for it.
Thank you, Maureen. Any other concluding comments? Again, as Kate said in her presentation at the start, we always look to the findings for the ordinance, and if you can make the findings, then you would vote aye. If you cannot make the findings, that should be stated on the record which finding and for what reasons you would not be able to support the ordinance. Let's take a roll call on this, and then you can state your reasoning during the roll call or at the conclusion, if you prefer. Lori?
I vote aye. I believe that the findings can be made for the proposed ordinance.
Paul?
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And the chair votes nay. I find that finding B, that this is consistent with the adequate public facilities policies contained in Douglas County Code Title 20, cannot be met. I believe that by eliminating what's likely to be a large number of vacation home rentals due to the, even the modified, or the, not the modified, but the clustering that restrictions that are in the code, the reduction in the number of occupants, the reduction in parking will cause a large number of vacation home rentals to relinquish their permit. Those will be replaced likely by full-time owners or full-time renters, and that will increase the strain on the roads, the police, the fire, and that would not allow it to meet finding B. So on this, there'd be six votes in favor and one vote against, and the ordinance is recommended for approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Ernie, thank you again for your very good work. Mickey, again, thank you for your very good work. AJ, thank you, and we will move to closing public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name, sign the, the sign-in sheet, and you can proceed.
Good afternoon, not evening yet, Ellie Waller. Today was an exercise in process breakdown, and we need to make these corrections sooner than later. Watching applicants, as Ms. Casey talked about, ostracize people, I'm trying to use the right words as well, is unacceptable. So there has to be some norms for applicants, like we have norms for board members. And I'm going to caution you, we really need a Tahoe expert on staff. I'm not saying Kate, no disrespect there, is not doing her job, but we need somebody to answer questions. I'm in Chapter 13 of Area Plans in the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Ordinance. Folks, there's backcountry, there's conservation, there's recreation, there's resort recreation, there's residential, there's mixed use, there's tourists, there's town center overlay, there's regional center overlay, and high-density tourist overlay. When we try to coin the word tourist area, we have to be very cautious that there are definitions that go with that under the TRPA ordinances. It's not upon you to understand, but it is when staff comes forward with recommendations or the Vacation Home Rental Board, who is very familiar with this area, understands these zonings, we have to be cautious. There, even TRPA lacks enforcement. I know that enforcement's a big issue for everybody, but parking on dirt is illegal. So if you're looking at an area that you're considering four parking spaces and two of them are dirt, it's illegal by code to park on that dirt. So again, I appreciate that I can be part of the public process, I do try to do my homework, I'm very familiar with TRPA codes, I knew where to go in Chapter 13 of the ordinances to explain to you that you just can't use overarching statements. I'll look forward to the Board of Commissioners, and again, it's nice to see a good debate going on, but I always will look to the committee levels, as well as the planning commissioners who also are advisory, and see what happens. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Serena Martin, I'm just like disappointed that this recommendation went through, because I don't think it properly addressed the safety measures you guys are talking about. Somebody said that Lincoln Park was a death trap and it needed to be called, as it was in the presentation, and, you know, basically, none of those things actually affected the safety of the residents that live there or the people that are coming to visit. You know, by having a lottery system for the VHRs, that just attacks people and lowers their property value for no reason. There was no talk of like increasing the snow removal, or figuring out a way to get fire trucks in and out, or putting in like one-way signs or something like that. Instead, it was just like going after the vacation home rentals. It didn't actually go after the safety, which is what I think the purpose was, but other than that, I was just, you know, disappointed. So, I mean, I would really hope that somehow with the planning committee, you would look at like putting in some type of stoplight at that light. If everyone is truly concerned about entering and exiting the property, then putting in something, some type of measure there to slow people down and allow people to turn in and out without having to like race into traffic. So, that's all.
Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I want to thank the, the staff who've worked so hard on this, thank additionally the clerk staff, they have worked long and hard on the elections in the past two weeks, three weeks or more on other, on other projects, and they have worked long and hard, and we appreciate their good work and their support of our, our meetings. So thank you, fellow commissioners, and we will stand adjourned.